If everybody's ready, it's 2 o'clock, so I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. For the Republican Party's vote on the title, please.
The Republican Party's signature by one of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the wisdom which will give you justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the election of officers, deputies, and regular board members. And we're declaring this proportion of the meeting number to County Administrator, Mr. Curry.
Thank you. Board members who are aware, we don't follow any particular process when making nominations, but we can agree to follow a standard process if you'd like. And I would recommend that you open the floor to nominations. Allow the number of nominations to be made, close those nominations, and then if there are more than one, simply vote with the name of the individual or the agency that you designed. And then move forward that way unless there's any discussion otherwise. So in the packet, there's an organizational meeting resolution as a number of components. First of which is to elect a chairperson to serve until the successor is elected at the next organizational meeting to be held in January 2021. So I will open the floor to nominations for chairperson. I'll nominate Christine Smith for that position.
I'll second.
Any other nominations?
No nominations to be closed.
Nominations. Not hearing any other nominations. Go ahead and just vote on the sole nomination, given that our packet resolution is set to vote on each. So I'm motion to appoint Ms. Smith as chairperson. Roll call vote, Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Would you like me to continue through?
I would like that very much. Thank you, Gary.
Next is the election of vice chairperson. So I'll open the floor to nominations for vice chairperson.
I nominate Mrs. Donahue for vice chair.
I'll second that nomination.
Any other nominations to be voted?
Second to close nominations or any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I'll accept a vote to appoint Ms. Donahue as vice chair. Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Next is appointment of representative to the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission. General, this has been held by the chairperson. I'll accept the nominations for this position.
I'll nominate Christine Smith for this position as stated it tracks with the termanship historically.
Any other nominations? Have a second and a single nomination. I will call vote, Ms. Donahue, to appoint Ms. Smith to the Rapid and Regional Commission.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Next is the appointment of board supervisors represented to the Rappahannock County Planning Commission. Set the nominations.
I'll nominate Debbie Donahue for that.
Any other nominations?
I would nominate Mons Frazier for that.
Any other nominations or a motion to close?
I think that the nominations be closed.
I have a second for, let's see. Let's take a roll call vote. Appointing Mr. Parrish, or Mr. Frazier and Ms. Donahue to the Planning Commission. Please vote with a name. Ms. Donahue.
Mr. Parrish.
No, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Frazier.
Do you have to read that soon?
Yes.
Pass it later.
Mr. Whitson.
Mr. Frazier.
Smith.
Mr. Frazier.
Parrish.
Ms. Donahue.
Mr. Frazier. Next is appointment to the Rappahannock County Planning Commission for representative from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Nominations. Who would they nominate this year? They recommended, I believe, Mr. Conick, although he was not at the meeting. He, to my knowledge, has not been reappointed by the court. He's held over until another appointee is made.
I'll nominate Chris Perry for that. He's been on the board for a couple of years and doing a good job.
Any other nominations?
Well, typically, we, as the board, have honored their request and have their representative. But I would put it that you kind of can't vote.
Any other nominations?
I think that the nominations be closed.
Second close nominations?
Second.
Vote to appoint Mr. Conick or Mr. Bird to the Planning Commission as a representative from the Board of Zoning Appeals by the name, please, Ms. Donahue.
So this is totally wrong, but I have a question.
Okay.
If Mr. Conick is not reappointed to the BCA, what happens?
Our local ordinance states that there are five citizen representatives to the Planning Commission, and then, well, seven total representatives, five citizens, and one may be a board of supervisors member and one may be a BCA member. Mr. Conick stops being a BCA member, I think it would be a bit confusing in that he's being appointed to a one-year term representing BCA, but he doesn't sit on the BCA and nobody can represent the BCA.
So in the event that he will be elected, then looking from the stipulation that his term is only as long as he's on the BCA.
I think that with the wording being "may" and not "shall," I think that that's good for interpretation.
I think, I don't disagree, but general citizen would have a four-year term and a BCA member would have a one-year term. So I don't know what the term would be if he no longer represented the BCA and then following him in the BCA. Anyone ever up that BCA.
Well, this is the BCA appointment, so I think it attracts with the BCA.
There would be no argument on here.
Correct.
I would support Mr. Conick with the idea that we'll deal with it when it happens, or doesn't.
Mr. Frazier. Mr. Parrish.
Mr. Bird.
Mr. Conick.
I'll support Mr. Conick, belonging to the lines of my colleague Debbie Donahue. I think it's regarding his term on the BCA, he's still a member of the BCA. He's been recommended by the BCA. I believe the tradition has been to follow the BCA's recommendation for appointment. We can cross that bridge when we come to it. It's a, I'm supporting with the idea that it is a one-year term.
For complete clarity, perhaps it'd be appropriate for, while not in this resolution, a motion to set the term as one year. So there is no confusion right now.
Should we do that when we set the agenda for the regular meeting?
How many should go now?
Well, I would make the motion that, as is the understanding that this is a BCA representative position to the Planning Commission, the term of the appointment shall be for one year.
Second. Motion by Smith, a second of Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
But opposed? Next is appointee to the Rappahannock Rapid Basin Commission. Frazier, appointee and alternate. First open nominations for appointee. I'll nominate Mr. Whitson for that. Second.
I believe there are two positions, right?
There is an alternate position.
I'll nominate Chris Parrish as the alternate.
Any other nominees?
I think that the nominations be closed.
Second to close.
Second.
I have a roll call vote to appoint Mr. Whitson as the appointee and Mr. Parrish as the alternate. Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Two appointees needed for the Public Safety Committee, approved by definition for example, the APC as well. Nominations for the two appointees.
Just in the interest of making it easy for everyone, I believe Mr. Frazier and I have been serving on person who'd be willing to continue to serve as well.
Is that a nomination?
If Mr. Frazier will have it, it's a nomination.
Any other nominations?
I think that it be closed.
I will call vote. Appointment of Ms. Smith and Mr. Frazier to the Public Safety Committee. Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Frazier. Parrish.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Whitson.
Aye.
Next is appointment to a board member to serve on the Fire Lady Board. The nominations.
I'd like to nominate Debbie Donahue for the board representative to the Fire Lady Board.
A second and, I'm going to make the motion that the nominations be first. I'm sorry.
Second.
He puts it down, I have to put it in the sink.
Roll call vote to appoint Ms. Donahue to the Fire Lady Board. Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Next is the representative to the Rappahannock County Federal Warren Regional Jail Authority Board. One position. The nominations.
I nominate Mr. Parrish for that position.
I have a client. I nominate Ms. Donahue for that.
Any other nominations?
I am concerned that I'll be able to handle the workload, so I don't know how often these.
What's every other? I'm looking to close nominations or additional nominations.
Can you remind me about the timing of these meetings?
They are midday on Thursday. Yeah, very Thursday. Very, very. Maybe Thursday is a month. Every Monday. I think it's two o'clock. It's 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock.
I would be agreeable to be an alternate because it is midday meeting. This can be challenging. I certainly would be happy to serve as an alternate if there is a conflict to attend any of those meetings.
I mean, I'm appointed by nature of my position, so I attend each of these meetings.
Yeah, you should. You should.
The sheriff is appointing this one. They're talking in English.
Yes, they are.
They're short news. So as a sense, I believe we have one nominee who's going to serve possibly, Ms. Donahue. Are there any other nominations or a motion to close?
I think that the nominations be closed.
Second. Third. Roll call vote to appoint Ms. Donahue to serve on the Rappahannock County Federal Warren Regional Jail Authority Board. Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier. Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Next is board member to serve on the Agricultural and Forest School District Advisory Committee. The nominations for this position.
I think this meets once a year immediately for the Planning Commission?
Approximately once per year, but not every year.
Okay. So the option is to meet this year if you want to serve. Mr. Frazier.
I guess I would kind of tie in because they meet and then the Planning Commission meets like a month later that same evening. So it wouldn't be that much of a.
Any nominations?
Yes.
Second.
Could it be closed?
Take Mr. Parrish's second to close. Roll call vote on appointing Mr. Frazier to the Agricultural and Forest School District Advisory Committee. Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier. Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Next is appointment to the Recreational Facilities Authority. Set the nominations for that position, one board member.
Nominate Mr. Whitson for that position. A second, I think that the nominations be closed.
Second, aye.
Roll call vote to appoint Mr. Whitson to the Rappahannock County Recreational Facility Advisory, Recreational Facility Authority. Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Board member represented to the Rappahannock County Community Policy Management Team. This is for the Children's Services Act, and their next meeting is tomorrow. The nominations.
I nominate Mr. Parrish. Hopefully accepts it this time.
Any other nominations?
I think that the nominations be closed.
Second close.
Second.
Roll call to appoint Mr. Parrish to the CPT. Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
And then two representatives to serve on the Rules Committee with an alternate as well. Appointed three total members. Open nominations. I'll nominate Ms. Whitson for one position.
I'll nominate Mr. Frazier for one position on Rules Committee. Given most of that survey already. Any other nominations? Motion to close.
I make a motion to close. I volunteer to be the alternate as well.
Second, aye. Roll call motion to appoint Mr. Whitson, Mr. Frazier on the Rules Committee with Ms. Smith as an alternate. Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Lastly, is to set your regular meetings for calendar year 2020. This is listed in the resolution. As regular meetings of the board shall continue to be held on the first Monday of every month, except for the September 2020 regular meeting, which shall be held on the first Wednesday of the month. In the courtroom in Rappahannock County Courthouse, located at Day Street, County Washington, Rappahannock County, Virginia, must change pursuant to section 15.2-1416 of the Code of Virginia. Regular meetings shall begin at 2:00 p.m. and at the conclusion of business scheduled for that time shall be recessed and resumed beginning at 7:00 p.m. if there are further visits to conduct. An event, chairperson or vice chairperson, chairperson is not available, could clarify if whether or other conditions are such that it's hazardous for members to attend any regular meetings. That meeting shall be continued until the meeting is called on Wednesday and the other board members and press shall be notified by the county commissioner as soon as possible. Further, except as noted here in the event, every regular Monday meeting, day calls on holiday recognized by the County, that meeting shall be held on the following Wednesday without action of any kind by the board supervisors. No further notice or advertising shall be required as to the manner of advertising for regular meeting. Continue pursuant to this paragraph, these changes to the regular meeting schedule are authorized pursuant to sections 15.2-1416 and 15.19 of the Code of Virginia. The board is entered into avoid conflict with the general district, but chooses the same meeting during Tuesday, the next business days after the regular meeting date. Like a motion and a second to approve that meeting schedule. So I'll second it. Roll call vote. Miss, any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
And that concludes the organizational portion of the meeting.
The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I do know that there is one addition or variation from the agenda that was published, which is that Mr. Ed B. Dot is here to join us today. So it's been requested that we add a B. Dot presentation under I M G. Presentations. And I wasn't sure if anyone had any of the changes.
Are there any other recommendations, Judge? The one which is informational that we discussed earlier. The, um, the one, the group that we sent. The informational, the tax, the tax issue.
Oh, that's under a different agenda. I'm already.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Has amended?
Yes.
I'll second. All in favor? If you signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the school report with Dr. Burnsley.
Happy New Year. You're welcome to our people members. You guys keep it up there. Congratulations, Ms. Smith and Ms. Donahue, for your appointment as leadership. This is excellent. We look forward to working with you in this new capacity and continuing your support from the board members who are listening. Thank you so much. Our offices opened back up after our winter holiday break today. Students will return to us tomorrow, hopefully well rested and rejuvenated. Just prior to break, we completed our fall semester SOL testing at the high school, and I am very happy to report fantastic test results, including nearly all five of our tested math classes had just about a 100% pass rate. And biology tested above the 90 percentile pass rate with two new instructors and a new framework teaching biology to ninth graders for the first time ever. So we're thrilled with those results. We could not be more pleased with the level of achievement our students earned for semester. We test many more groups of students in the spring, and we are confident that this program will continue. Also, just prior to break, I'm sure you've read that we were able to hire an outstanding candidate as our new elementary school principal, Mrs. Lisa Gates. She was the top candidate after a rigorous interview process with a large interview team representative of all affected stakeholder groups. She was commended for her resolve and confidence in stepping up to handle many principal tasks already as the assistant principal in her first semester. Her strong, extensive background teaching struggling readers in specialized reading recovery, intervention, and early learning programs was a critical area of need in the leadership of our CES as identified by the committee and in stakeholder surveys distributed prior to the interviews. In fact, she has already implemented key strategies that have shown great progress in strengthening reading programs at our CES and empowering teachers to measure more frequent and periodic growth in reading. Her major goals are to ensure that every student shows at least one year's growth at the end of each academic year in every grade level, and that every student is at or above grade level by third grade. We look forward to a very successful second semester with our new leadership. A current internal search is underway for the assistant principal position, but the goal of hiring someone this month, more to come on that as the process unfolds. We are thrilled that we have officially launched the My Futures Program, the children's savings account program that I've spoken about previously for about last year and a half or so, where every kindergarten student who enrolls at Rappahannock County Public School automatically has a savings account open for them with $100 in that account. Throughout each year of the student's academic career, the student has the opportunity to earn an additional $100. Thanks to the hard work and generosity of a new nonprofit, Family Futures, and support from the Heckwaters Foundation, private funding is now available to make this program a reality. The overarching goal of the program is that every Rappahannock County public school student will graduate with a plan for the future, financial capacity, academic and personal skills to pursue that plan confidently and successfully. Additionally, this program will also offer free financial coaching, workshops, and events to parents and larger community. For more information about accessing these free financial resources, please contact Jen Capes, a high school. Our school social worker, Kathy Segler, has worked together with the Department of Social Services to open a student clothes closet where students and families in need can access needed clothing, hygiene, and school items discreetly. If you know of someone who may need to access the clothes closet, especially with the cold weather coming, because you guys know I don't close schools because it's cold. I have warm buildings and food and hot buses, so they'll be coming in the cold. Please let us know. They can contact Kathy Segler, school social worker, or either of the guidance counselors at both schools. And you do have access to resources, or can get them when they need. Finally, Governor Morton has released his proposed by-deal budget for the upcoming two years. We are happy to note that the budget does show that the school system will receive an additional $65,000 over this year's funding despite the LCI adjustment. However, of course, there's always provisions with accessing that funding and what those funds could be used for. So the, his budget will call for a 3% teacher raise over the two years, additional school counselor staffing, and then also some investments in early childhood and preschool. So we'll see how that kind of unfolds. There's a long road to go before we have an improved budget, of course, but that will give us a baseline anyway. And I will present the full local public school impact. And I will present the full local public school impact of the governor's proposed budget at next week's school board meeting. Um, Gary and I are working on a scheduling of budget work group consisting of each of us and one member from, one or two members from each of the boards, um, just to strategize and try to universalize some talking points as we're advocating for funding, especially with our unique situation, um, with our local composite index and the actual demographics and all those things. We talk about it every budget year. Um, so I will send out another Google poll to try to ascertain availability and it will be pretty much based on that. Um, and we just really appreciate your willingness to work together. Um, and it would be great if we could have that meeting prior to our joint meeting coming up in February because it will give us some, um, some work to, um, to share with both boards at the same time. Do you need to add to that here? Um, well, thank you so much. We do appreciate your support of the public schools. We can do what we do without your support and gratitude, so thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Um, Dr. Grimsley, I just wanted to, um, say how excited I was to attend the board meeting of the My Futures Board, and that's a great program. And, um, we're fortunate to have people in the community to support that and you're fortunate to have Jen Capsette there administering it. Um, my recollection, if I'm not mistaken, is it's the first program like in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
You're correct.
And, uh, and certainly one of the first in the world area like ours. So congratulations to everyone involved and I know some of the private citizens behind it are in this room. Um, and I'm grateful to them and to all of you for putting that program in place so efficiently and quickly.
Thank you so much. Very excited. Thank you so much, Dr. Grimsley. Next item on the agenda is public comment. When you are recognized, please stand at the microphone, if you're able, and state your name and the district, where you are from. And, uh, we'll look, keep the comments under five minutes, please. And with that, I would ask that the public comment session be open. Yes, Ms. Ramos?
I'm Nina Ramos, Sampson District. Congratulations to you all and I'm just thrilled about being towered in this room today, which many of us are. Um, a very quick one before I start, I'm gonna give kudos to B-Dot. Um, I drive through Vint Hill neighborhood all the time and I didn't get a chance to listen. I remember hearing to tell them how well the contractor did on the Vint Hill project that they were in charge of. It went fast, it went easy, it was wonderful and most of us were pretty scared about how hard it was going to get, it was going to be to get back and forth on the highway. So I want them to know that they, they really did a good job, they picked the right people and they, I'm sure kept at them and it worked out pretty well, so anyway, congratulations. Today is Epiphany. This is the day the three queens finally find their way to Bethlehem because they didn't bother to, to carry a map and ask directions. Um, we know if there'd been three queens, they would have brought diapers. I, I have a few things to ask of the board. I don't ask too often, um, but there's a couple of things that have been on my mind for a while. First of all, business tourism and business in general. I hope you all put the, put yourselves to the grindstone and try to find more ways that we can have good tourism and good business in this county. And I think we need to look and see what other places are doing and not doing. We will not be having vineyards and, and fine places to eat forever and we need to look at, at our future. The signage question. Um, I hope that all of you will look around at other places and here and see signs that you like and don't like and pass that on to planning and for your own deliberations when that time comes. I think we can do a good job and I think this county very much needs some nice signage before you enter the county from all of their various major directions. And something that will tell what we do here because people ask me all the time in here, what in the heck do people do in Rappahannock? And I go, they do so much that they don't have any time to go to work. But I think we need to have someplace where we're touting the fact that there's so many activities in this county that people coming to visit or coming to want to stay might want to be involved in. So look at the signs that, that you see on the highway everywhere, take pictures with your cell phones about what you like and don't like, has that sort of, you know, thinking about these sort of things. The General Assembly, I follow the General Assembly as part of my job for a number of years and I know that what goes on in the General Assembly is more important to us than almost everything else in government, to tell you the truth, because they tell us what we can and can't do as a county. But you can go to them and ask them to do things for us and I'm happy to see that there's a thing or two it looks like on, on the schedule today. But I'd like to see us just a tad more proactive with ours, our Commonwealth and I think that can be done. It's, it's, it's proved a right to run legislation to get it passed, it really is. I saw it so many times in Fairfax and yeah, they're big and have much more staff and all that stuff, but there's things along the pipe that you guys might want and you need to think about it and see if you can get those things presented in the General Assembly. And last of all, in memory of my dear husband who sat and watched you guys for ages and ages, um, I'd like everyone in the room who has worked for the federal government, who has been in the military, been a direct contractor with our government, to stand up, please, or step forward. I know there's a few of you in the room. I personally want to thank all of you who have taken such good care of our country and that's the most important thing of all, that you have, you've done so much for us and I know all of you have gone above and beyond your job descriptions to take such good care of our country. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Philip Earl of Vint Hill. Uh, for the second year in a row, I have, thanks to Hills Per College, uh, Hills that college, provided a copy of the Constitution and Declaration of the Dependents, the foundation of our great society. And I am delighted to be able to present each of you because you have sworn allegiance to the prostitution and our declaration. And I trust that you all will swear allegiance to the values of Rappahannock County for which we have become incomparably different. Thank you, congratulations and good wishes.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Gresham.
Good afternoon, I'm glad this is downward. I didn't deal with it. Anyway, I want to, I want to welcome our new board members. I'm excited that you all are here and welcome back to our previous board members. I don't want to say old board members, that would be terribly friendly. Um, I did write this all down because I didn't want to miss anything. Uh, I'm sure that many are familiar with the expression, "A new broom sweeps clean." Not always the case, I'm afraid. I can tell you countless stories of companies where new ownerships wrecked havoc and practically destroyed them. One in particular in my employment history, hugely successful home builder, where I thought the transition would go well and it did, briefly. A friend there mentioned to me though, Sheila, look at the top ownership, all bean counters, counters, not one with construction or land purchase experience or background. Sure enough, not too much later, I heard a newly empowered manager state that there was no housing bubble and things went downhill from there. Today, that company's a mere shadow of what it had once been. However, on a positive note, I can share with you about a cruise company whose sailings I enjoyed for many years. During that time, it has maintained recognition as the best small cruise line despite three ownership changes. Each new owner group realized the value of the employees who had demonstrated proven ways to provide excellent customer service and kept these employees throughout the ownership changes, even restructuring a tip system to better reward and acknowledge its employees' importance. So two examples, one detrimental and one positive. I think we're at a tipping point here in our county. How, how we choose to go forward to make sure we have a viable thriving place for our Rappahannock community now and into the future. For one, our comprehensive plan is nearing completion. As Mr. Curry mentioned in a recent meeting, no plan is perfect. We can listen to what the consultant groups stated moving forward, leaving some topics to the next comprehensive cycle. Keep our planning commission intact so they can continue in the wise ways they have demonstrated. Additionally, thoughts on the building committee? I think the courthouse buildings are rhetorical. If so, what grants could aid in their repair or restoration? Hiring a grant writer for many financial solutions for our county. Recently, a member of the Amosville Fire and Rescue found such grant funding. Bravo to him. Establish an economic development committee to gain, regain jobs lost and find ways to encourage new businesses. We are establishing a better broadband, broadband and cell capacities. We're lucky to have David Donahue as a supervisor now, whose entrepreneurial business experience should be an insightful benefit. The Virginia State Code states affordable housing. We need a committee with courage to educate our citizens about what that really is, how we can attain it. One young man stated the need for available housing at a recent meeting. In, and I want to get this with economic development, we're not looking for this huge enormous push. Three percent would be, I think would be fine. We're not looking for this huge development thing. In conclusion, I used to have a poster that stated the importance of ecological balance in our world, stating, "In the midst of it all, man stands, capable of destroying it all or living wisely in the world we love." I hope that our path forward here in Rappahannock is based on wisdom and not evil. Happy New Year.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir?
Construction bit squeeze, okay. All right. Paige Glenny, Jackson District. Uh, I would like to address the Aileen Condemning and Conversion that's on the agenda. First of all, I support Virginia Chutney and the businesses like that in the county. I personally believe that is the way forward in this county for saving small farms and maintaining rap agriculture, as we say in our comprehensive plan. Because moving up the value chain is what's going to do it. There, our farms are never going to be able to compete on the commodity level and continue to go down and down and down and down, which is isn't a problem. For example, what I mean by that with those non-economic majors is that means we sell pies, not apples. We sell hamburger, not feeder, uh, feeder tabs, right? But, sorry, do, I do not support this non-conforming method of getting there, all right? Processing of food and agricultural products has never been in our ordinance. Consequently, it could never have been approved and it is never, though it can't be non-conforming. Regardless or despite whoever showed up with a ribbon cutting, that doesn't make it in the ordinance. So it just plain can't be non-conforming. I request that you tell the planning commission to fix the ordinance. We need this change of processing food in the ordinance, right? To allow processing, just as it says in the application, processing, packaging, storing, selling of agricultural products and make the use, a permitted use. You may still need an application, you know, if you don't want to do farms and we have here processing thousands of chickens, but that's not going to happen anymore because of the infrastructure, right? It saddens me that the planning commission and the applicant, B Z H A, did not take the initiative to fix the ordinance themselves when it came up. This tells me that you need to work on this planning commission. It needs help. It needs some change. And then the last question. What is the big hurry? Virginia Chutney has invested a lot of money. I don't think they're running out the door anytime soon, all right? Maybe I'm wrong, right? But why the big rush? Let's get it right. We're going to continue to find these little hiccups in our zoning application. I recommend we get them straightened out the way it should be and stop covering over or continuing the mistakes that were made in the past. We don't need to drag those people through the mud, but we just need to start doing things right. What are we going to do with the next company that wants to come in and process food or a food cup? How are you going to deal with that? Are we going to wait until it's right in our face? I would say get out in front of the problem. Thank you. For your opinion.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Um, I just was wondering, I'm Alex Sharp with the Island Project and I was just wondering when that subject comes up, if I may be able to answer questions.
Yes.
Okay.
We had this kind of pre-discussion about your wanting to speak and we will go ahead and address that portion of the agenda.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, Deep Deep, it's Hampton District. I want to welcome our new members and thank our previous members for all their past service. Um, a lot of challenges ahead in the county and a lot of opposition to certain issues, one of which would be the cell towers and, uh, what would be the first on record, first of the year to voice complete opposition to cell towers in any, any fashion, shape or form. And I encourage you guys, if you're looking for a role model for the new members, uh, use H B Wood as a pattern, uh, as a consensus builder, somebody who listens to the constituents and that's what I'm urging you, is listen. If there's mass opposition, that's a pretty clear message. Good luck. Looking forward to it. We're going to watch like a hawk.
Anyone else wishing to speak? And with that, I declare the public comment session closed. I was going to ask for Mr. Curry, please walk us through the consent agenda. This is our second.
Yes, on the consent agenda, uh, this afternoon, we got adoption of amendments attached to the, uh, agenda materials and distributed to the board in advance. It's got accounts payable, which doesn't put a payment to opportunities for legal services, for which you may choose to create declarations placed before you. Uh, there are no supplemental appropriations. There is one item regarding contingency budget and that would be to, uh, assign seven thousand dollars to be used with our consulting engineering firm, uh, to prepare propagation masks for the, uh, cell towers nearby the two proposed towns. Uh, we have recordation of the abstract of those from the November elections, which is required in the adjournment. And then approval of resolution, resolutions committee service for, uh, any board members, Mr. Wazinski, Mr. Butler.
Pointing board, Tim, uh, as you may recall, Perry John was giving a little bit, I had to leave for part of the December meeting. I'm not sure exactly what I should do with the vote on the minutes. I was not here for most of the afternoon session.
But, uh, you certainly don't need to have been here to vote in favor for them, uh, but if you'd like, you could pull them out of the consent agenda and vote.
I think I really should have stayed from the adoption of the amendments. Again, if we either do it that process or we have to, uh, something to vote for the consent agenda.
There may be others that also wish to have stayed. There may be others that also wish to abstain from approval of the minutes, so we may want to pull those out.
And as known previously, it takes one board member to request an out of consent agenda. Am I here yet?
Yeah, but now, this is a unique situation. With two members not abstaining, would they be able to approve the minutes?
I believe a two, three vote would approve the minutes.
Yeah, I think because of exception, of exceptions, we couldn't approve. Okay. If we could pull the minutes, we should.
My name is Chip.
Yes, sir.
I'm a proponent for revision meetings, and I'm grateful for the consent agenda approach. However, I do request that we pull from the consent agenda the item mark number four, which is the contingency spending of $7,000 for a study by federal engineering, given citizen interest, including Mr. Deacon's interest in the cell tower question, and given this is a contingency spend, I think it's best if we at least let the public know the details behind this. And I believe some questions for board members would also be useful, just to flesh out exactly what we're seeking. So, with your approval request that we pull that from the consent agenda, it doesn't require anybody's approval.
Right. We'll just pull it out on that, please. Are there any other items of concern in the consent agenda? So, the consent agenda, then it includes items two, three, five, six, and seven.
If no other items are presented, be pulled, it would be appropriate to read your declaration of potential property.
So, pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2, 3115H, as a board supervisor member, I may have a personal interest related to the federal discounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defenses as an individual and member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3115H, as a board supervisor member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and member of the board supervisors, I'm sorry, as a member of the board supervisors. Let me clarify. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3115H, as a board supervisor member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement and action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in that transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3115H, as a member of, excuse me, as a member of the board supervisors, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing legal defense for individual members of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3115H, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the board of supervisors. I certify that my involvement and action is as a member of three or more members of the board of supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
With that, assuming additional discussion or vote to approve the consent agenda, less the minutes and the contingency.
I move that we approve the consent agenda minus the two items that have been moved out of it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have the two items remaining. The minutes for adoption, I can, you have me, Mr. Parrish. I would move that we approve the minutes as presented. Mr. Frazier?
I'm sorry?
I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'm abstaining from that because I was missing part of it.
Very good. Mr. Donhead?
I should have seen twelve, wasn't it?
Mr. Whitson?
Abstaining. We were here, but not as members of the board of supervisors.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. And then the other remaining item on the consent agenda is the contingency by number Mr. Curry, did you have any additional details to add?
I can't. At the last board meeting, a board requested that I look into having our consulting firm, who works with the photovoltaic radio system, see if they could prepare propagation maps for the Sperryville Tower and Boston Tower, to see how they would, how the coverage would overlap the area proposed for the new Scrabble and Woodville Towers. I thought at that time that the cost wouldn't be very high and I could just charge on with it. I saw a proposal at $7,000, and given that magnitude and the fact that they told me they could have it done by the end of this month, if I gave them notice tomorrow, figured I'd put it on the agenda and have the board authorize it, $7,000. So, it's to prepare propagation maps for the two existing towers, to understand how that existing coverage provides service, projected service in the area between those two towers.
So, once we get providers on these existing towers, we will know how far they go, and we're going to find that out automatically when that happens. So, I just wonder if this is put in the cart before the horse projecting like that.
The T-Mobile has already installed equipment on the Boston Tower. I was led to believe it would be functional by now, as of examining, maybe it was not.
It seemed to me like, if that's the case, by the time they did their propagation mapping, we would know more about the service that's going to be, and then it won't be long we'll have the older one, and it seems to me more sensible to just see what we got.
There is some, there is some value in having the empirical information on the ground from the coverage that you receive, overlaying that with the predicted coverage from propagation map. And if you have consistency between the two of those, then you would have better confidence in the projected coverage from the Sperryville Tower, which we don't know when that equipment will go on that tower.
Mr. Wilson?
My concern is currently we're relatively defenseless in terms of having our own empirical information to consider in light of the pending applications in Scrabble and Woodville. One point of clarification, maybe Mr. Curry can help with this. The planning commission approved the Scrabble Tower site, but did not approve the Woodville site. Would it be possible, and you might not be aware, so it's now both a $7,000 estimate for the propagation study, would it be possible to bifurcate that study? So, it looked at theoretical propagation between Boston and Sperryville, and then a second sub-analysis that took into consideration what the propagation would look like if Scrabble was put up.
The planning commission recommended approval and disapproval. The ultimate approval is up to the board after your public hearing. I can't speak for the cost. I suspect it may be a little bit more. I'm guessing that a good amount of the $5,000 is the time it takes to get set up and get the scenarios in place. And then, once that's done, fixing them to a different location and probably not too hard. But I can't guarantee that.
If I could, I have to agree with Mr. Whitson. I think if we have these applications in front of us, we can't, we can't harden them. That's the fact. So, I think the more knowledge that we have known into the discussion and approval process or disapproval process would be, you know, a great benefit to us, the board, and the public.
Well, if my memory serves, the reason that this was put on the agenda is you have discretionary spending up to $10,000, correct, Mr. Curry?
Yes. This isn't budgeted anywhere, and that's, I could probably go find a couple thousand, but as it gets higher, then I need somewhere in budget to pull.
I appreciate you seeking value from the board in game in case it is, but I'm in favor of it, at least because it gives us information that we don't have, or it could give us that information.
Well, and that was my intention bringing it forward with my position on the planning commission, is that I didn't feel like we have all the information that we needed from a technical standpoint to be able to review those applications thoroughly, especially since the propagation maps that are included in the packet for the tower on the Eldon Farm site in particular do not include changes to the tower height. So, that wasn't, that wasn't taken into account, the latest publication mapping from them either. So, if there's a way to have all of the scenarios represented in line with the current applications, that would be my preference as well.
Just what I can tell you is that the proposal I received was $7,000 for two sites, and I suspect it would be some more for three or four sites. My rationale and thinking for selecting those two sites is it would inform your decision as to whether two towers are needed or on 522 between Boston and Sperryville or one. And I guess we're not in the business of picking sites, so if the board is inclined to provide additional funding beyond the $7,000, we can set a ceiling, and I can go to work crafting a scope of work to get additional sites for propagation.
I know there's no way to hold you to this, but would you think it would be an acceptable amount to get off board on four? Do you think 12 would be acceptable? Or does that seem like a reasonable number?
I have no way of knowing. I would guess 10, but I don't know.
Which is under your discretionary?
Yes.
But I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Just one point to add. Reviewing Virginia Code applicable to these types of applications, as I said at the outset, I believe we're defenseless, absent additional information. I think it's important that we have something with which, where should we reach a decision to deny the applications. My other concern is a common sense one, which is we have a tower in Sperryville that everyone can see that currently provides no service. We have an infrastructure company, which they've described themselves as a commercial real estate company. They're erecting these towers with little consideration for the timing or the urgency of actually getting service, service providers up on those towers. So, it makes me very nervous without some kind of propagation information at our hands to let the shot clock continue to point, but we're going to have to decide to allow a company to build a tower that might or might not be needed. And so, I just want to underscore that point, because without this information, we're, our hands, I believe, are really tied in our ability to deny the applications.
Meanwhile, I think that we'll provide incentive for the company to get providers of Sperryville Tower if we waited and didn't go through this process for now and see what it does. And it's just a, if we line up the road of towers, if there's no providers, it's not going to help anybody. And I think it would provide an incentive to this company to get, like I say, to get providers. So, I don't see what the rush is. We'll know, once they get providers, we'll know how far it goes, and we'll know where the towers need it, if there is a tower needed. I think it'd be great to know the information for the design, I guess.
I guess that was my main concern, is that I do anticipate, the date that I heard was the end of January for the Boston Tower, if I remember correctly. And the date I heard for the Scrabble Tower was spring, if I remember correctly. And that means when we have to reach our decision in February, you may or may not know the coverage areas for the, for the two towers that are currently approved and built.
That should make you aware that we did receive correspondence today from CWS suggesting they may be seeking a further extension of the shot clock, although we haven't heard back from them. I know today's, it's going to be designed.
You have any motions or additional thoughts on the assignment?
I think I put forward a motion that we approved initially at $12,000 for this gentleman.
Just to clarify, that's true, the original scope of work for the two towers, plus the additional scenarios for the two proposals that are currently scheduled for approval at the end of February.
That's kind of long for me to remember, but yes.
Sorry. Tracked out a little bit more than I thought it would do.
Some of those.
A second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is presentations for Christian Esposito.
Thank you. First of all, I think that Mr. Whitson, this is directed to the board. The report I had is month-to-month recorded, not, I would say, third month, assembled a lot of changes from the previous month. Maintenance forces are pretty much tied with performing routine maintenance activities, preparing for winter weather operations, which right now, we're capable to have a proposed to enter June tomorrow. So, just spending a good deal of time with, I'm sure, our equipment and everything is in order for our winter weather response. So, really, the only part of thing that brings my attention is partial rustic projects we are. South Coast Road is our next project on the list. We are currently on Turkey Ridge Road, and we'll hard surface that road as soon as the weather permits in the spring. It's already prepared for hard servicing. South Coast Road is a road that we've got on schedule, or somewhat we put together on that, and I hope we get started on South Coast Road. With that, that will be Kaijin Run Road is our, is our only other road on the list. So, we will be looking to, you know, reviewing our funding and the cycle to be coming up here in the spring for potential additions to the road. As far as, we did have a couple of traffic engineers, one of them is to look at Long Mill Street for additional signings for. Long Mill Street for additional signings for an area that floods from time to time. And currently, we have a warning sign of, when I read the code, it's a warning sign which requests for additional signs that shows the actual depth of the potential flooding. And our traffic injury sections would be added. The diagrams from our manuals are not, they're fairly gray, but they did feel like the front of the warning signs was adequate for the conditions that we're experiencing. Any additional specific information? Also, we've had requests from local citizens in the Flint Hill area regarding speed limits and parking issues in Flint Hill on 52200 in Flint Hill. And we have made some signing adjustments with the speed limits. And we also are hopefully making some more signing adjustments and also pavement parking adjustments to underdefining the site areas at a couple of the key intersections. I'm not sure what it is. I didn't have a chance to write it through there before coming to the meeting. I'm not sure if it's yet been done yet. But they are, we're all planning on putting some hash, some pavement markings at the intersections for site distance, especially at the 641 intersection there as you come in down. We did have a speed, radar speed detection sign up there a couple of months ago. And I feel like that was helpful and we'll be bringing that back up there on occasion. And I would suggest that if there's other locations that the board would like to have that type of equipment, we'd be happy to put it into our rotation. We've got pretty handy that we kind of live around. But we'll put it somewhere for a couple of weeks just to get people's attention. Sometimes people don't know that they're speeding. It helps sort of get their attention. So we'll offer that up to, we'll offer to the board members to, if available, if you have an issue or constituent that you need help, that's certainly a, but Mr. Curry now will be glad to respond, you know, to any questions that you have. Currently have a meeting with Donna Hay to discuss roads in Chester Gap.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Whitson. But like I said, not much since the last year, for last report. So if there's any questions, let the board have a bit of contact.
Thanks very much, Mr. Hasbrouck. Two interrelated issues I've crept up on Mount Marshall Road, which is 625. It's a branch off of Paris Olive Road, which is 622. You have Todd Walker up there recently working on the, what do you call it, the pavement apron that leads to the gravel, then entirely gravel road, which then reaches a terminus at the Mount Marshall Trail and then to the National Park. I wonder if someone could look at that apron and see whether or not it could just be paved instead of patched, although patching was helpful, I think, for the residents down there. It's still pretty rough. And then the interrelated issue, I've heard from a number of constituents who live on the road, apparently there's a Washington DC hiking club that's driving 55 passenger tour buses down Mount Marshall Road. And that might or might not be something that we can address. But I just put that on there and I'll follow up with you suffered from this meeting and maybe talk about it further. But clearly, it's become a regular pattern, which is causing great wear and tear on the pavement section, which is just a relatively short section, then also the gravel after that.
You might need to include Sheriff Compton on that question.
I am wondering with the speed camera, that's not the camera, but the speed unit that you can put up, how much data is obtained from that unit?
That is a fairly old unit and it really doesn't, it doesn't have that type of capability. We're fixing, we're looking to get a newer, that one is 20-plus years old. It's in the shop half the time. But I'm looking to get a newer model that looks like, you know, it's like cap counts and it'll give us a lot more information on neighbors, things like that.
I have a question along the same vein. I think that it encountered a problem after, shortly after being set up in the Sperryville area, it stopped registering or showing the speed limits on the display. So as soon as it is operational and back in the area, it would be nice to have a back on it strategy to a 11-year-old hog or it has sat for a while recently.
Right. Yeah, just like I said, it's always had some issues and we're going to have to get a replacement for it. Hopefully, it'll take, it'll take too long because it's, it's not performing through Richmond, but something we can do locally.
Thank you, Mr. Hasbrouck.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Next item on the agenda is appointments. Mr. Curry, if you would, if you could kindly stop this for a second.
Yes, you continue to have employment vacancy and you're acting as a forceful district advisory committee to be helping to handle and handling your procedural applications. If you know of anybody who may be interested in meeting once a year, possibly, not every year, it's a big rate for them to sit on. There are no applications this point, will be long.
They get paid per meeting, right?
And meetings more than once a year, maybe. Next is appointment to the planning commission up to Wakefield District. There's a vacancy due resignation, actually the term, resignation. We have two applications that are in the packet and on a new form that the board approved recently. At this point, it turns over to the board to appoint a member or hold it open for additional applications.
Does Donna Hay consider these districts, so I would defer to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am very pleased to say that we got two very strong candidates that did put in their application. Mr. David Aldrich, who has been in the county since 2007, married with children of 31 and 27 each, lives on Little Long Mountain Road. He was a former board member and treasurer of the Rapid County Sewer and Water Department. Mr. Whitson introduced me to him. And I thought he has a lot to offer to this county, whether he is selected or not at this point. And the other person is Brian Shulman, who lives on Chester Gap. He is, has been a county resident since 2003, married 17 years with three children, 16, 13, and nine years old. And he is an accountant for Shulman, Patrick, and Edwards. And yes, that's his father's firm. He has a bachelor of science degree in economics from Virginia Tech. He was on the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation Board for six years and the Piedmont Dispute and Resolution Center in Warrenton for six years. I believe that the commission could use some new blood. And I think having someone from the Chester Gap area that has younger children, has knowledge of an affordable housing area in the county, and is very interested in continuing to see the county remain the way it is, albeit knowing that there's slow, controlled economic growth for the other side. I would like the board to consider that we nominate, or I am going to nominate Brian Shulman for the planning commission from this term, which ends?
May 1, 2021.
May 1, 2021.
That's one of the best. I mean, the, this means.
That is correct.
Do we have a nomination? Do you have a second? Any additional discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank Ms. Donna Hay for her thorough work on finding good candidates for the seat. I think we all want to see the planning commission perform well. They've been dealing with a lot. A lot has been on their plate. And I think we all agree on this board that we need organized, logical people there, especially with regard to organizing, review zoning ordinance changes, and keeping track of those change requests that come from this board. As Ms. Donna Hay mentioned, I had recommended David Aldrich, with whom I worked on the Rapid County Water and Sewer Authority. He's a terrific professional and I think he would have been a great addition to the planning commission. That said, I fully respect the work Ms. Donna Hay has done to vet both applicants and I'll support, support her recommendation. I would like to say, though, that now Mr. Aldrich's name has been brought back into the county government fold. I hope that we, as a board, can find a way to involve him some other way if Mr. Shulman is in fact appointed to this position on the planning commission. But again, thank you, Ms. Donna Hay, for her work on this.
That sounds like a second.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion on this? If there's, if there's no further discussion, I just wanted to also echo what I heard and how very much I appreciate the aptitude of both applicants for this position. And I think either one of them would have given credit to the planning commission and a true resource to the planning commission. That makes me remember my sentiments from before I was even elected to serve on this board, that I wish we would expand the planning commission. I know the state code allows us more appointees.
I was going to discuss that after the vote.
Okay. Well, then I won't include it in the discussion. Maybe we'll take it up after the vote.
Since this is an action I have in the planning commission, I just thought we could follow up on that.
Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Fraser. All right, we have a motion and a second then. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Did you want to continue? Did you want me to give you last thoughts on the subject?
If you wanted to speak to it, that would be, that would be great, Mr. Fraser.
Well, since the board had the, I think it's four sides that were just, they appointed me to be your representative on translation, I already have a recommendation. Having served there a number of years previously, it was my position, it wasn't my idea, but it had been brought forth by members of the public, that exactly as you said, the state statute allows for the planning commission to be from five to 15 members. I think, excuse me, 15 may be a bit of a burden, but we have seven. And since the state code allows that and we have applicants that have put forth the name of members, pounds, or the same as other vacancies, including Aldrich, I would be prepared to make a motion that we give him back in large to the planning commission at this point to get some of this work done by adding at-large members. And every name that I would put forward is pretty susceptible by the case of them made that in the vote by members of this board several times.
As local ordinance, that's 170.
I understand. I understand that our ordinance is in violation, if you will. It's not in sync with the state code because the state code says it can be from five to 15. Our ordinance limits it. I don't see how that's.
Well, I would suggest the ordinance enables a number within five to 15, and that's seven. And I think you self-asked or it's have self-limited you locally. I would recommend the mission to modify that ordinance.
I think that we can put that language in the hyper to be, right, to bring our local code into compliance with state code. But I think our state code takes precedence over the, with the local ordinance. I think our local ordinance is about the same.
Wondering if you had any thoughts about this, Mr. Ball?
I'm just looking at 15.2, at 2212. A local planning commission shall consist of not less than five nor more than 15 members appointed by the governing body, all of whom shall be residents of the locality, qualified by knowledge and experience to make decisions on questions of community growth in the government, provided that at least one half the members so pointed shall be owners of The local governing body may require each member of the commission to take an oath of office that says, you know, what the statute terms are going to be and then how to remove. So I think you can, you can have up to 15, not less than five. So that's all it says. It doesn't say anything about at-large and what that means, I don't know. But you can have as many as 15.
The only reason, if I could interject, the only reason I use the phrase at-large is because we theoretically have five members appointed by district. So the others would be introductions that would be at-large.
Well, you could have two from every district. How you wanted to work it out. I don't think the code necessarily constricts how you allocate the, you know, the members geographically. It's really silent on that. Just talks about.
And I don't think it, I don't think it actually allows us to put a cap on it with our local ordinance like, you know. It may have been at one time, 15.2 may have changed over the years and I think it's been, I've had to remember.
Let's see, the last amendment to 15.2, let me check the supplement, 2212. So that'd be here. Let's see, 1950, 1960, 62, 74, 86, 88, 97, and 2006 was the last amendment to 2212. So I would think that what we, I don't see any restriction. I think where you become violated of the state code is if you have more than 15 or less than five. Whether or not our code needs to be changed to just say the same thing, I would argue that it should, just out of clarity, just to have, just parrot the exact words of this statute, 2212, not less than five, more than 15. And then it's kind of locality, how you go to define those. And if you wanted to have appointments by district, that's fine, too. I don't see any reason why I have to file with this. Or if you wanted to call it at-large, but does that large mean that they don't get a vote? Those kind of details will have to be worked on.
I think if you set in that example, we decide not to follow our own ordinance. And of course, if we're going to do this, we need to change our ordinance first. And then that would give us an opportunity to discuss the cap on the, I think if we had 15 members on board, it would be pretty different cluster, wouldn't it be? I'm not recommending for taking that again, but I think our ordinance is actually invalid. That might, I think we need to change the ordinance first. If we just ignore our own ordinance, it's not a good example of the program. At one time, y'all wanted to follow the ordinance and two years later, we actually have to rescind it because it was invalid. So I think, I think, I think it's a good move to get this worked and we've got a lot of work to do.
I wonder if we can continue this discussion in the evening session. Would you be able to look at the local language with our migration? If you go to the state and let us know this evening, if this is something we could be action on now?
Yeah, and I think that, you know, yeah, I can do that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Ball.
The night evening?
Yes, continue to the evening session.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess at that point, we'll continue it under item R4, Old Business. I'll make it R4.
If you want to manage the agenda, what do you say to a motion?
I would make a motion that we continue this discussion under item R4, Old Business in the evening session.
Need any more voting?
I'll, I'll be happy to make a motion.
Okay, I'll start it.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Madam Chair, I have a question I've heard, because I'm, I think I'm supposed to address. Is the limitation to seven planning commission, planning commission members violated by 15.2 2212?
And is there any reason, is the, correct? If it's violative, then we should be able to take action at a point more than seven, correct?
Yeah, if it is, then you can point more than seven. Well, I'll ask my question, too.
Okay. Thank you so much, Art. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the appointment to the RCRFA.
Yes, I have not received any applications for records of those.
Yes, I have not received any applications for records of those. It was advertised in the newspaper. Need direction if you want to try to advertise again, or if organists want to go out to the citizenry and try to find representatives.
Change your reasons to waste money on advertising.
It takes us to broadband committee appointment.
Yes, as board members are aware, a broadband committee was started in 2017. It was not created by a resolution, but by a simple motion. Naturally, the meeting, it was in September, there was just a consensus to have the committee and have Mr. Lozinski lead it. And then in November, there was a motion to appoint several citizens to include Debbie Carter by name. So at this point, Mr. Lozinski is obviously no longer on the board. I don't believe Ms. Kaiser thinks she's on the committee, although she is. So this is an opportunity for the board to clean up and clarify who the board representative should be, or should be one, that the committee should continue, and who the citizen representative should be listed in the packet of those members that have previously been appointed.
Do you have the motion or discussion?
Maybe it's best to take this in parts. There are a couple of questions there that have to be cleaned up. I would make a motion that Ms. Donahue be appointed as the board supervisor's member to the broadband committee. She's already done a lot of work on this and has a great interest in it. She'd be terrific. To an annual.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate, and the organizational meeting in the future appointment can be set.
And that can be added to the elections at the beginning. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. And then I think that that then leads us to the question of Ms. Kaiser's appointment to the committee. And now, just since she's no longer the county administrator, it seems like it's just housekeeping. I would think that we remove Debbie Kaiser from the broadband committee.
And I would, because I noted in the packet, recommend that I not be appointed specifically. So I do have an opportunity to meet with different members and have a meeting.
Do I have to make the motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair, I do know that Mr. Lozinski has the interest to remain on the committee. I assume there's no issue with that? Is that correct?
Have to be appointed. So what you could do right now if you wanted to.
I guess that begs my other question when I reviewed this list. It didn't seem to follow the normal pattern of having a term associated with their appointment. And I wondered how long some of these folks have been serving, and if we might be able to get that information.
All except for Mark Herbon, who serves since inception.
Yeah, because the.
So we're coming up on a four years, in 2021, so another year and a half would be on a four-year term. I guess I think that we should, we should have four-year terms to this committee, just like we do the planning commission.
There are a couple ways to go about doing that. The board could ask the rules committee to draft a resolution, charter resolution for the group to define specifically what they're determined to do, the term, limits, etc. Or you can just have a motion right now to modify any practice.
I think that would probably be a more efficient idea, but it's going to be staggering the terms, so you wouldn't have, if this thing is going to survive, I think the amount of time you should have to start the terms.
But it would also give you an opportunity to meet with members of the broadband committee and how they would like for it to be structured. So we have a few things. We have the motion to appoint John Lozinski to the broadband committee. Do I have, do I have a second?
Was there a motion?
No, no, be happy to make it.
I'll second that. Been there since inception and knows all the ins and outs and would be very helpful.
I agree for continuity and that institutional knowledge. I think that will be invaluable now. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then do I have a motion to refer the structure and the term limits for the broadband committee to the rules committee?
I have just one question. From a technical standpoint, are would those terms be applicable? Would they be? There you go.
Thank you.
Would it be four years after the date of appointment?
Right now, they're essentially forever. It's a little the board, pleasure of the board, to study the rules commission committee, which formally the charter resolution that defines that. They stagger them in, half of them two years, half of them four years.
Okay, yeah, that's my question, because if we set today as the date or whatever it is, they'd all be on the same term, the way down, total board term, or so.
And then maybe some willing to cycle off.
Okay.
And hopefully, it would be an opportunity for the rules committee.
We've got to handle with the state code, planning commission first. You know, one member would be for one year, then two years, then three years, and then at their four-year appointment.
Right.
And that's a good cap if they go by, if somebody smarter than me came up with that, when you're on the rules committee. Because I found that, so I probably could use it, but I'm not going to have to credit for it.
Do we have a motion to send that?
Yeah, I would make that motion. I think it's a good idea.
And a second?
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is there any other housekeeping to do for that committee? And we didn't appoint you there either.
Thank you. Very similarly, we did have the building committee, which was formed by a motion of the board at a February 5, 2018 meeting, which at the point in time, it was reconstituted from the building task force, which had many members, 12 members or something, actually constituted to a smaller five-member group. That included two board members, Mr. Fraser and Mr. Lozinski. So at this point, in recent meetings, you appointed Mr. Palenney and Ms. Stamps along together with myself to make that five-member committee. So you're missing one board member representative, and you may choose to reevaluate or reaffirm the second representative, Mr. Fraser. These two have new terms, and you may want to for list to the rules committee as well.
If you're still willing to continue to serve, Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, I would be willing to help.
If you do not believe in motion, you can do that, because it wasn't for, appointed to the max.
I think that's the wisdom, you still have a system.
No, I have expressed interest, and we're sitting in a building that clearly needs attention, so I'm happy to jump on board and work on that.
Thank you.
Who's on a motion, Mr. Fraser? Who has a motion?
And I'll second. Please further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So is there an interest to push this to the rules committee to develop a charter resolution to define the scope and terms for this committee as well?
I feel it.
Yes, sir.
This is kind of like, should we kind of find something to keep me busy?
Maybe.
Just a question.
You've got a hard claim to answer. You've got a question.
Well, maybe if it goes well with the broadband committee, you can just copy and paste and change the wording a little. But I do think it is a good idea to refer this to the rules committee as well.
I'll make that motion and also clarify the, I don't know if it's already stated, but the terms of the appointment of board supervisors members, I don't know if those are annual appointments.
They are not.
That should be defined as well, so I'm going to be sent to the rules committee to clarify the terms of the.
It probably should be.
Is that a second? Was that a second?
That's a second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll take this to the appointment of the fire levy board.
This is just purely reported out to let you know that Mr. Brady was appointed by Ms. Donahue from Wakefield and now are full. However, I would say that the Volunteer Fire Rescue Association and the fire rescue chiefs will self-appoint, and those may be changing with their annual.
Old Business Public Hearings, Mr. Curry, if you'd be surprised.
Give me one second. Perhaps I'll take a two-minute recess.
Okay, let's take a three-minute recess, please. Thank you. We are getting to Old Business Public Hearing.
Yes. The board is aware that the city of CWS has applied for two permits for cell towers, essentially, one in Scrabble and one in available properties. This agenda item is to request approval from the board to advertise for public hearings for both of these. However, there's been some correspondence today. With CWS considering offering a further extension of time, and in order to allow that to materialize, it may be appropriate to move this agenda to the evening session so that board members can be provided with the latest information and to make a decision on when these public hearings should be launched.
So just to clarify, we are continuing the discussion about the planning commission appointments to R4.
Correct.
And so I believe this would make continuing the public hearing discussion, Old Business I1 would now become R5. I would make a motion that we amend the agenda for a place stage. Do I have a second? Mr. Fraser? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We can leave this in the special exception that Eileen Condomine conversion.
Board members, a call from your last meeting. Eileen Rappaham, C, submitted a special exception application, 19-10-01, to proceed with a condominium conversion and expansion of a non-conforming use. Board modified the local ordinance last year to include section 170-47M, specifically speaks to condominium conversion ownership to condominium. Previously, local ordinance had a requirement for there to be a special exception, a normal special exception for this to happen, and the board modified our board to align with state code for beta, which basically allows the locality to consider whether the conversion to condominium ownership would impact any existing non-conformities. And you shall grant the application if the applicant can demonstrate to a reasonable satisfaction that the non-conformers are not likely to be adversely affected by the votes conversion. At last meeting, Mr. Fraser brought up the question of whether the existing use is non-conforming or if it was illegal. I'm taken position that it was non-conforming, and since then, had a fair amount of dialogue between Mr. Fraser and the attorney and others related to that fact. And I believe that based on code of Virginia, section 15-2311C, that if a, if the zoning administrator or other local government administrative officer provides a written order requirement to his decision or determination, even if it was erroneously given, and 60 days passes from that decision, and there is a material change in good faith and reliance on that written determination, it is in fact, by definition, a non-conforming use. Turf Foods, which did invest significantly in the property, they did receive a written order requirement, decision, determination, and form of building permits from an administrative officer of the county, and to deem their current use illegal would be on the face of confiscation of their investment, which is why the state could protect that even when it is been erroneously. That's my position.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Fraser.
Non-conformity is not a change. At one point, it would have been for anybody that had it. Am I correct on that?
That, in most cases, that is true. 15-2311C is the exception where approval was granted erroneously by a local government official.
It's not there, though. I've not seen such approval. All I saw is copies of building permits, and the building permit that I've seen is very vague. It says renovation of commercial property, renovation of kitchen. It doesn't, it's not a use, it's not an active use, but it's there currently.
I think maybe we just need to get through the discussion at the front end, and then once you get through that, those are from the applicant, and then we can certainly discuss the question of that.
Yes, and I don't want to go down this path, anybody suggesting, even accidentally, that I am suggesting confiscation for doing the project illegal. I think we need to make it fit properly. This certain, and as Mr. Leonard mentioned briefly during his comment, this may be something that the planning commission should look at in this board, of something as soon as possible to allow this type of process of, you know, commercial kitchen, food handling in the county for value-added reasons. I mean, we talk through the table, and then we've done nothing. I mean, we talked through the table and then we've done nothing to grant our planning commission and zoning ordinance up to date on these types of things.
And I appreciate that and I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Fraser. I, I just wanted to approach the topic in an orderly manner and finish hearing from Mr. Curry and then hear from the applicant and then we can have discussion as a board.
So there, the special exception application seeks two things. The approval of the conversion to condominium, which is based solely on whether the conversion would impact the non-conformity, and then an expansion of a non-conforming use. As we just noted, both of those hinge on, on the determination of non, of the existing use being non-conforming is something else. This was advertised as a public hearing with the Public Hearing Planning Commission and then it was advertised for a public hearing with Board at last meeting. Our local ordinance states that if a public hearing is continued from a meeting, meaning it was never opened, then no further advertising is necessary as long as a public hearing happens within sixty days. However, state code appears to require the adjoining property owners to be notified if the public hearing is continued, so there is a disconnect between local and state law. And I believe for that matter, to avoid any issues of there potentially being a defect in the notice that a public hearing be set through a February meeting with renewed newspaper and adjacent property under notification as required by fifteen point two twenty, twenty-two oh four. Regarding the non-conforming use or not, the Board certainly could consider modifying what it says to permit this type of wholesaler by right in the general commercial district if that's what the Board wants to do, but you should do that knowing where all the general commercial districts are in the county. So in and around the bank, if you want to allow a wholesaler to be allowed to go by right, that's fine, but it's not just for this property, it's for all general commercial properties.
I would recommend initially either conditional, conditional use permits to either issued by this Board or zoning attorneys, but I think that's a proper penalty. And I try to, I don't want to offend anybody, but I believe we're trying to cover up the state of this money at some time in the past and I don't think that's a good fix.
Well, I know we had discussed, that we did want to hear from the applicant. If everybody's in agreement, I think that's an appropriate thing to do and I would just allow them to comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. I purchased the. I purchased the property in twenty-ten, September of twenty-ten, and the county had actually provided the financing for, not the majority, but about half of the property. The county had an interest then in the property, which began in the early nineties. They financed the purchase, then to push car made the property and said they had ownership interest. At that time, they changed the zoning to this general commercial, partial general from industrial. Then when Pushcar sold it to me, the county provided the financing and so the county was the lender, the primary lender on the property. During this time, John McCarthy bought me the Turner Foods and they were, some of the name, Piedmont Camry, I think it was, at the time, and they worked hand in hand with him. Their lease required them to verify the zoning, which they did. I realized that it was not the correct, you know, in hindsight, way of doing it. So then they had a written cutting and that was not meant to do anything other than just graphically demonstrate that it was in full knowledge of the county. The building permits, I think one said that it was to, to a kitchen unit and then the other said it was remodeling offices. I realized I couldn't find the, the application, it was not available, but, and the county does not issue apparently occupancy permits to exist in spaces if it's remodeled, and so there was no occupancy permit, but would not have been given. So anyway, Chuck, the, well, the condominiumization, my initial foreing to this at that time, a year and a half ago, was I applied to get the change in the zoning ordinance to accommodate this use as Mr. Fraser suggested, but it seemed, and I paid the fee to do that, but that application was never heard. Instead, the county went ahead and modified the ordinance to accommodate properly condominiums, which I said it shall require, and I think the state code says it may require, so it's a little tighter than the state code, shall require a special exception permit. So we've gone around and around, gotten legal opinions, and even most recently I brought it up again, this seemed to be the recommended approach and I, I think it's not desirable to do things this way, I would agree, but I think it may not be desirable to change the entire ordinance just to accommodate one use in one location, so I definitely see that as a factor. My main thing today is I feel like I've kind of been bumped for months to months and so I don't definitely would hope not to be bumped another month not knowing what the route is, hoping that the route is what has been recommended, which is a special exception permit, I think you have the legal backing or opinion that would accommodate that and that would be my hope, and if not, I would still like to know preferably today also. Are there any other questions?
I guess the question that comes to my mind is, is there an urgency to this that we can't address it with the ordinance change? Is, is there a time?
Well, what I would just.
Time people in this?
What I would just say is, I think, just to reiterate, if, what has happened is I've gone kind of this month and then you missed the advertising deadline, then next month and then something else comes up. And for example, if the December meeting had been determined that that was the route to go, then we would be in process. Now it would not be in process until, I don't know when. And so if that is the route you think is necessary, then I would really appreciate knowing today because that would seem rather than just bumping it off a month. And I do feel like it was a bad meeting for mine to come up last month because of my five hundred supporters who showed up and overwhelmed.
Overwhelming out for you.
That was a time to cut the deal.
Yeah, I should have cut it down and it probably would have been better off, but, but anyway, that was a bad time to do it, it wasn't, it could have been open very quickly and then closed and it wasn't, but, you know, people were, it was a high-stress property situation and not a good time for mine to show up, but I think today it sounds a little calmer and that's what I would hope. And I mean, as far as urgency, I would like to put this behind me and get on with my business, so that's basically what I'm looking for.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Just in light of what Mr. Sharp said about the, of all the second amendment and Eileen public hearing, maybe this is a question for Mr. Curry, just if you could explain to me the timing of why we have to renotice this, just so I'm clear on this point.
The, the Code of Virginia states that if you continue a public hearing against twenty-two oh four C, that you need to renotice the adjacent property, that's not the, well, our local ordinance says you aren't to do anything, but that section of code, which Mr. Sharp is looking to right now, is not, it's, it mandates what we do, it's not an option for us. And so by the preponderance of caution, we recommend if you were going to make, open a public hearing, you do so in a way that fairly clearly aligns with the state code and our code by just advertising the paper and noticing the adjacent property.
And I would add that it's probably less helpful to me to have a decision in my favor, if you want to call it that, that it's open to question in the future, that's not going to help me as much, I would rather wait for thirty days if that's, you know, since there is this.
We're talking about a reason. I see. The special exception requires us to follow the advertising requirements of twenty-two oh four.
I just want to make sure we're correct on that point, that it does have to be months into February.
I think it seems like it relates back to the issue of the ten acres on the, on the tourist room.
Correct, we don't want to do anything that's void.
You don't want to have a notice that's defected.
And I mean, I think regardless of how that's, if that's applied, if it could be applied to this, I mean, that did seem like it just kind of goes on forever, so if that's a two, like that's a good limbo.
So ultimately, what I was hoping to get from the Board today is authorization to advertise for a public hearing at February meeting and for the special exception that's been applied for. It can be determined through your votes after that public hearing whether it is appropriate to grant, requested special exceptions, whether fifteen point two twenty-three eleven C with the non-conforming applies or doesn't apply, or you can, I guess, short circuit that entirely and just not authorize a public hearing because you think, as a majority of the Board thinks that fifteen-two twenty-three eleven C doesn't apply, it's not, it doesn't enjoy the non-conforming status, it's illegal and therefore there's no, you're going to send a cease and desist letter to the existing company saying you're operating and you can't operate, this is a violation and we'll follow through with enforcement, which we may set aside for the ordinance to not, to be.
So that we don't spend a lot of time in holes, we can just kind of go to what I think is, is the problem. I cannot in good conscience vote for this as a non-conforming use and maybe, maybe I'm mistaken in my understanding of the code and in the floor, I think we should go any further with that, that we have a written opinion from the county attorney that clearly shows a case law situation where this had been decided where an agent of the Board of the county issued some sort of a permit erroneously. I have not seen a use permit, all I've seen is a building permit and a building permit is not good enough to constitute a change of use, so I don't see where it happened. And if it did happen, it happened erroneously and I don't think we need to see case law to that effect.
And then, did you have something?
Or we just move on as a board and, and send us to the planning commission for a change in the way that it's taken to allow it to start.
Did you have something to add, Mr. Litsen?
I do, this is a question, this is a question for Mr. Collins, I think. Under the three-prong test under fifteen-two twenty-three eleven C, a written order requirement, decision or determination was made by the zoning administrator or other administrative officer, what is the nature of the order requirement, decision or determination that we're looking to fulfill the, the first part of the three-prong test?
Well, generally, it's going to be some sort of written thing like a, like the issuance of a permit or a letter.
Are we talking about the building permit in this case? Is that, is that what we're using to fulfill the first part?
Well, let's see.
The clearest would be a zoning permit, which there is none.
It says other administrative officer, so after sixty days of the last.
I appreciate your work on, on, on this background in the code, I just want to make sure they're reading all three.
Or the person agreed has materially changed his position, so that's the next problem, in good faith reliance on the actions of the zoning administrator, unless it's proven such written order, required decision or determination was obtained through malfeasance. So it seems, the code seems to envision a written order upon which a person relies in good faith and then also suffers a detriment in that he's changed his position materially and that he's obviously engaged in starting the project in good faith reliance on that written order. So in order for this to comply, we're going to have to have some evidence of a written order to show that, that there was some kind of permission given for this non-conforming use to occur at this property.
And is there any aspect of the county's involvement in the ownership of the property?
Yeah, I understand, I understand, this parcel was industrial and then at some point it was rezoned to fourteen point two seven acres agricultural.
Well, fourteen point something.
Fourteen, and then, then the other part, commercial, I guess we're talking about the commercial portion here. As of now, there's no little fit in our code, in our section for the processing of canning of goods, of food, of meat, vegetables, what have you, for commercial.
Right, natural media, that was about.
But this, 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 this use goes way back, but all we're missing is a piece of evidence and that is the written order or opinion of the building official or the zoning official, at the time it was John McCarthy. We don't have a case letter hands on that.
So I think, what was discussed earlier, at the risk of wasting money on an advertisement, staff can move forward with the advertisement of a public hearing for the next meeting, notice the adjacent property owners, the county attorney can dig into all the facts and remember as opinion as to whether the existing use enjoys the protections of fifteen-two twenty-three eleven C or doesn't, and that can all come out in February.
We would spend an additional seven hundred dollars, that may.
Oh, it won't be that, three hundred dollars or so.
It just seems like we're rushing to do this and we may not want to do it two weeks from now or, or whatever.
And if you're going to talk about changing the little, the little uses that are allowed in commercial to include this type of activity, then you got to refer that to the planning commission.
Right.
This is a hundred days before that comes back, before we have, unless they act quickly, I don't think it would have to be that.
I think it can be fast track, I mean, if it's something that the Board actually wants to see happen, the planning commission.
We can work it back.
You can have it, you'd have to come on back, but you don't have two public hearings to do that, you want to set a date less than a hundred days and then have to have a public hearing on that question.
Well, I couldn't, well, I couldn't leave back and take that meeting. You have a joint meeting of, of those.
That's the, that's the most efficient way to do it, is to have a joint meeting of the planning commission and the Board.
To change the ordinance.
To change the ordinance.
And then require them to submit a special exception application for that use.
You could make it by right.
You could make it by right if you want to have wholesaling operations in your general commercial.
We'd have to, that's a little too.
And I would say, I wouldn't recommend.
Yeah, I don't think I like that idea right now. I mean, it might grow on me, but I doubt it. I don't really like that idea. It might grow on me, but.
So I still would put forward that there is some damage to not changing the entire ordinance just to suit this one, I don't think this will ever repeat itself because it's something that.
Well, I just would put it to the Board and you, Mr. Sharp respectfully, Carrie and I looked very closely, there's nothing for can in any of the uses that.
Well, I think it's covered in.
And that's not smart if you're talking about agricultural.
No, no, I agree, I think that we ought to take a serious look at that and I think we could fast track it and bring it back in proper mode and then we wouldn't have this, at least I wouldn't have a good place to back it.
It's allowed and I'm pretty sure this use would be allowed in an agricultural fund if the produce is produced on-site. I think that is what.
I hope there is allowed in industrial as well.
I, I believe whatever industrial is.
If, if the property were not presented, it would be a costly tough.
But I would, I would suggest that this probably is not an improper use in any general commercial area.
I think it's a good fit for the property and I think it just isn't in the documents that we have.
I think it's a good fit for any commercial general property and I think that was the probably intent. And you know, out of interest, the cold storage is, which generated, and this was a sewing plant, you could not have a sewing plant at this location, you could not have cold storage in the existing cold storage buildings under the current ordinance. So none of these uses have been contemplated even though they were in existence at the time. And I don't think, I mean, you have the three phase power, I mean, I think the intent there is a higher level of...
Is that a Y system?
Actually, I...
The delta? I forgot.
I don't think it's a delta, but I don't...
You're right here.
Oh, yeah, that's the, yeah, that's the, they're the same old, the three phases. Yeah.
For historical purposes, if it was zoning industrial and one acre lots are allowed in general, that's why we downed some of the commercial. I think the whole parcel was zoning industrial.
Yes.
We downed some of it.
And I think that was something that the county did when, just prior to selling it to Bush.
Bush, right, we didn't want the one acre lot capability of anything.
I think commercial general is one acre lots as well.
Are there any other questions for that applicant?
Yes, Mr. Collins.
So when, when the Chutney factory began its operations at that current location, who was the then-owner of that portion of the property?
Well, I mean, I, I lean, same in fact, it was my ownership.
The county got it in two thousand and two?
The Ilean Incorporated.
Went bankrupt.
Went bankrupt.
We logged for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the bankrupt sources.
Was back taxes or something? I don't know what that was, but yeah, the county took possession of it in the early nineties. It was a period of a few years while, I don't know what they were doing.
Taking out the ground one, if they were taking it.
And then they basically took and sold it to empty Bush car, who owned it for not that long, four or five years.
So when did, when did the Chutney place commence operations in its current location?
Well, the space was not, they were not in the location prior to my purchase.
So it was after you purchased it, the county did not own it at the time this Chutney operation began in that location.
Right, and I'm just suggesting that the county had financing on it, and was receiving payments on it, and I didn't, I don't know if that has a factor, because I know...
Okay, there was a note to pay the county your purchase price, and what you negotiated with the county, but they didn't, they weren't the record owners, they weren't the owners of...
No, no, no.
Rappahanna County has completely divested itself of ownership.
Feet, yes, but feet ownership, yes.
Well, that's the important part.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a quick answer?
I think I'll do it, I'll send anybody else has any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys. Yes, Mr. Wilson?
I'd like to put forward a motion in reviewing the three-prong test under fifteen point two twenty-three eleven point C, I believe all three prongs of the test are fulfilled the key word in the first prong being decision, the totality of circumstances surrounding the opening of the plan, Virginia Chutney process, I think, demonstrated decision by the zoning administrator at that time, and the other two follow under this test. So I would make a motion that would be advertised for a public hearing and, and then here this on February fifth, make a decision at that time of the special exception for nevertheless.
Give the motion to me in a second.
I'll second that, thinking in light of this county that here to be friendly to business that produces a special, so I'll second that.
Very good. Mr. Collins?
I think, I heard February fifth and the meeting's on February third?
No.
Okay. So I'm sorry. It doesn't need to be a motion, just a motion to authorize a protest.
At the February meeting, and so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye. Are we sure or want to get a legal opinion?
I do think we need a legal opinion and writing to move this forward, and I would request that, Mr. Collins, if you'd be willing to do that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'll put that in the form of being much, I have another question.
I can just...
Okay.
With case study, case study.
Would you walk and take time for the February meeting?
Out of terms of what information, is that legal opinion to expand upon the bullet point summary of the three-prong test?
Just to confirm that's valid.
Yeah, it looks at snow versus any other counter, and I think that might be the answer here. So I will certainly research to pay the cost.
Well, I think that will rectify a few things for this board, and also I know as applicant, you want to make sure that what comes out of this board is a solid decision. If there's any questions in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say, the board may want to consider later, at some point in time, perhaps in matters presented by the board, the process through which you want to discuss ordinance changes, zoning ordinance changes, they should be referred to staff or the planning commission, whether January or whatever, in a separate path.
We still have quite a few that have not been returned from the planning commission. I think mine goes back almost three years now.
Many.
Well, directed from this board.
Manager.
Yes, Mr. Wilson?
In light of Mr. Frager's very valid discussion regarding an ordinance change, so that this isn't a one-off, do we want to consider at this time directing staff to draft an ordinance change that would make this, in light of Mr. Quinney's testimony, and the need for accommodated value of agricultural production in the county, make this an across-the-board change?
I think I would say more of these, Mr. Frager, or do you...
I think it's a, I think it's a very, very valid decision we should have. I think we should have a small number of those to reflect on.
Well, it would certainly clarify the process for future applicants as well.
Yeah, it, it should be a process. We're really, we're too small a county to do much else except for that, that, that agriculture, so we want to sustain agriculture in a convenient way.
Is that a motion to refer this matter to the planning commission to clarify the zoning?
In a roundabout way, this might be a lot.
Absent specific language to consider, there would be no return period, we'd just be asking them to look into canaries also, where they should be by right, where they should be by special use or exception. Just want to make sure.
What kind of cases would it be?
Would you come up with wording?
May, I guess, sounds like you're asking the planning commission to come up with wording.
I think it will.
Just want to make sure we know what the motion is, so we can track it.
We're not, we're not going to track it.
Well, I can write the proposal back to this board next month. I don't think I'll have time between meetings to do something next month, the February meeting will...
Would you like for us to go ahead and come up with a draft to present to you, to then present to the planning commission?
Yeah, that would help.
That's probably the easiest way to handle it, if we can see that, like, under the February meeting, it would be very helpful.
So you're just asking this, this, the item of canaries et cetera to be on the next agenda, which probably doesn't require a vote and staff or government's certification.
That would be great. If we could get all the points to the line on this, it would, it would be very refreshing. I didn't think it could be more confusing than the discussion of the planning commission, but we did it.
Yeah.
If we try harder enough, we can.
So I appreciate Mr. Frager, you've done a good job over many years of making sure we follow the rules, and I don't want to, I don't want to lose sight of that, so I think, I think we can cover all our bases here if we take that approach.
Sounds good. Thank you. That's everything. The next item on the agenda is country of origin labeling letters.
Yes, let's ask that the letters that the board approved some time ago, we reconsidered in the six, turn into reconsidering this meeting. I know Mr. Wilson suggested some alternate language, I'd place a copy of that alternate language, that proceed to, the authorization required is for the chair to sign the letter in behalf of the board to serve a code change in the board. We just need to know what the content of that letter would be.
I'm comfortable signing the letters that are attached, or that are, that are stationed here today. And I would make the motion that we send these letters as presented.
If the public doesn't have it, maybe it would be appropriate to read the letter for public trial.
Are they same?
Yeah, one is to our delegate, one is to our state senator, whether or not it contains content.
Very good. The letter just reads, "We request your ongoing assistance in protecting Rappahannock County's beef industry, which is a part of our agricultural economy. In late 2015, the World Trade Association issued a decision that deemed discriminatory the United States' country of origin labeling law applicable to beef imports. As a result of this decision, American consumers no longer know for certain where the beef that they purchase is born, raised, and slaughtered. The WTO mandated change in our country of origin labeling law continues to undermine the ability of our Rappahannock County cattle farmers to differentiate their Virginia origin beef products in the market marketplace. Although we recognize the difficulty of overturning WTO's determination and reverting the resulting change of U.S. law, we ask that you continue to make every effort possible enrichment to protect the right of Rappahannock County's cattle farmers to purchase and label their beef as born, raised, and slaughtered in the common market. Respectfully yours, Chair of Rappahannock County Board Supervisors." And I would be happy to send these letters and make a motion that we do so.
There is a motion, I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Finance committee charter resolution is our next item on the agenda.
Mr. Frager, I guess, do you have anything to start off with?
Just, this item was reviewed and put forward by the rules committee, and they, in the end, October one, twenty nineteen, they voted unanimously to recommend this charter resolution to the full board for consideration. It requires appointment of two members and an alternate to serve on the committee together with the county administrator and treasurer. After they answer any questions, the general board could create any additional committees, because it usually needs more work for me, but this is what the board wants to do, that would work for you.
I think it's a very necessary thing, most any elected body around this city and town and county has, in school board, has a, has a finance committee. The school board, they, they're not the legislative body, we're the ones that sets the tax rate, then they're the ones that figure out how they're going to spend their money, and yet we don't have that here. And it actually doesn't make good sense, and it makes perfect sense to have a finance committee. We should have had one, we had one, it was abolished improperly by members of this, of previous members of this board, and I believe that this is a very workable resolution here, where the appointments actually would take place in July, or at least the appointments would commence in July.
The resolution is set to appoint members right now for the initial term, and then subsequent appointments would be made in July, and that is recognizing the annual pledge cycle, where in January is probably not the best time to make new appointments to such a committee relative to the budget.
Being in the middle of the process. So I, as a member of the local community currently, but now I would, I would motion to leave adopted.
We'll need three names to do that. Then for the, be a further resolved, I don't care.
Yeah, kind of got a head of it. I'm fine with the same number of this body that wants to serve on that, but...
And just to be clear, the alternate is envisioned to provide the prong, but three board members could not attend, because it would turn into...
I think these positions should rotate, I think, especially with the town, the mayor, or town whatever, the mayor is one of the members, so...
The resolution stays relative to the selection of board members, and selecting appointees from among the board that shall endeavor to diversify selections on the basis of tenure and elected term. This is fairly established rule of the board, that committee membership will rotate over ten, although they are not necessarily elected, to give all members working experience on finance committee.
I'm not completely opposed to this, but kind of don't see the necessity of it in that, you know, we're the ones that vote on the budget, we're the ones that collect analysis information, collecting information, and, you know, we are a finance committee as a board, and, and I, in general, speaking in general, that to have executive committees for boards and all that, it just seems like a little bit superfluous, but like I say, I'm, I'm not favorable, but I'm not opposed enough to, you know, stop, I just, I just questioned the efficacy.
Mr. Collins, thank you.
Any other thoughts on this committee?
I do have concern that it will take up more time of our staff, and that we do review the budget intensely, but again, I think with Mr. Parrish, I would say it's not good, I just want to make sure we're taking into consideration the extra times we require much of that.
Master. Yeah, I would, I would say we're very fortunate that we have high-performing staff at this time. Mr. Curry, Ms. Nick are both highly capable. By seeing the board as a long-range planning, and just reading the scope of work of the committee, it seems awfully broad and duplicate as it's currently written, so I feel like at least for now, I'm okay with that, given, given our staff and, like, given the membership of this board and our clear commitments of doing a thorough job on budget and other financial matters.
Another, another potential problem is if we end up with outside, you know, members on this type of committee, those members are going to have to be educated, and it's going to make the process cumbersome. So the more I think about it, I honestly think we're better off to have a finance committee.
Excuse me, did you repeat that?
The more I think about it...
Now, what you said, leaders are educated, leaders are...
Members of the public. I mean, we, we're getting all this information, and people with different skill sets, but... Where did you get them from?
It's two members of the board and an alternate, the treasurer and county administrator. I mean, I do think this is a good idea, I think we suffer from lack of long-term planning and vision priorities. I don't know that now is the time to launch it. Maybe like for us to revisit it in March or April, or possibly right after we wrap up the, the budget process. Because the budget processes are the only way for this year, I think that would be a more now, a good time for people to sort of know what their current load is like, and to be able to commit, to take on the committee, and also to have some... to be able to commit, to take on the committee, and also to have some experience with the budget, and feel comfortable taking that one. But I do think, in the long term, I think this is something we need to do. We don't do it.
I agree.
But I, I think the question is not, if we need it, I think the question for me right now is when.
That's been the whole question for the last three years.
I know, I know. And I understand.
The problem, the greatest problem is that the members of this Board became so reliant on certain former employees, that this Board was not prepared at all for what happened the last three years. And this would give this Board, and future members of this Board, sort of a segue into understanding some of the financial pressures, or, or, you know, stumbling blocks, or whatever that we have as a Board. And that's, that's why I, other committees, the Finance Committee, use the accounts payable every month. So it becomes, it basically becomes a competitive process for the consent agenda, that, you know, the invoices have already been looked at. But we don't, we don't do anything. I mean, that's what I complained about for years, we were the Board that didn't do anything. And now it seems like we still want to do that.
I can say that, and I talked with Mr. Herr Curry this morning, and when our expenses and our revenues vary clearly, because I want to take this seriously, I would personally like to continue to be that, especially during the budget period, to make sure I understand everything, and then maybe it is time to take it up in a more formal manner.
I'd like to just have, I haven't had conversations, I mean, I don't know if anyone else has talked to each other about this, I haven't had conversations about people's willingness to serve. I'd be willing to serve on this personally, but I just am hesitant to make nominations today, because I don't know of others' willingness to serve.
I would be willing to serve as well, but I think, I think Ms. Donahue and I, as new members, take very seriously our responsibilities, particularly on the financial side of things. I'm asking only for a little bit of time to settle in, and that, yeah, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to pass it up, or, or be inactive for the next four years, it's just the opposite. But I think it'd give us some time to grasp where are there holes to fill in terms of our financial analysis and planning, and then perhaps we can more productively define the scope of work that that committee would notice.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just, it goes back to 2009, I went to a VR, a, I've been one originally since then, I've been two, but another, I was one originally, because it's actually a jump on running the board and open the structural, so I forgot that maybe. But it was Virginia Resource Authority, they put up a meeting together in West Central Champaign University, and out of fourteen local, you know, local counties, there was a town of Stevie City, town of Rockland, and Rappahannock was there, the Council was there, there was fourteen counties present, and I was the only elected official talking about borrowing money, how would one go about borrowing millions of dollars for order sewer projects, or, or the town of Rockland buying several police crews, or somebody buying a taller fire truck that, you know, all that, or, or firing issue. There was no elected officials there, nobody, I should have been sent, they were appointed people. And, you know, they're the ones that's going to go and learn about financing and borrowing money, then come back to the elected people, make the recommendations to the elected people. They have to raise attempts to support those decisions that they have no involvement in. And I think it's just a very bad process. I think we need to have more involvement.
Well, if it's agreeable, Mr. Frasier, will you visit this in March?
Certainly.
At the March meeting, or just before budget?
April, who's making?
April.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Next time, it's our new business.
I guess, VACO reached out and requested that localities consider a couple resolution positions, just forward to them. First is regarding review of legislation with local fiscal impact. And historically, there was requirement that if there was a local impact, those bills had to be filed early, and that was eliminated over the last couple of years, and so there's a push to try to cause that to happen again, so that we don't get midway through the General Assembly Session and have bills dropped that have local fiscal impact. So this is a standardized resolution provided by VACO, that I've placed in our form, that has a whole lot of wear-ass, but at the bottom line is that now therefore be resolved that the Board Supervisors expresses its support for legislation, legislation that would provide additional time for review and analysis of legislation with fiscal impact on localities, as well as direct further consideration of additional ways to improve the review process. Will say that I participated last year, and again this year, in the state process, where local officials review legislation and report back through the DHCD what local impacts may be, and there's about sixty local officials that do that. So that would seem all, but I'm plugging to some lines. The Boards have a mind to endorse such legislation, you could do so through by adopting the provided resolution, which I will forward on to VACO, and they will track them all, and then hopefully show a broader force with General Assembly.
Do you need a motion for the support?
I would need a motion to adopt the resolution, a second, and then a roll call.
I would make a motion to adopt the resolution, as written.
This is second.
And this doesn't, this doesn't cost anything, right?
Hopefully, hopefully it saves money, if we can get here at the General Assembly to give us more time to provide feedback on legislation that may have a better effect.
It's a very direct question, but it's a good one.
All right, Mr. Frasier?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you.
The next item is similar, and it's a request from VACO to show support for legislation. The, VACO's number one position this year is to level the taxing playing field between cities, towns, and townies, cities and towns, have much broader taxing authority currently than do counties. Mails and lodging, cigarette taxes, things like that, the counties are either limited in the amount, need to get special permission from the state, or just altogether can't do cigarette taxes.
Good. I'm opposed to this, and I was, when I was brought up twenty-four years ago, my first year on Board, VACO's always liked this, General Assembly's been present, and I have to agree with it. I believe at the time it happened, Rappahannock County was the first county in Virginia to vote for a mails and lodging tax. Cities and towns had to hold a public hearing for that. They could have the place packed out like the school was, and then the next month, when nobody's there, just said, ah, but they have to hold a public hearing. Here, in every, excuse me, every other town in Virginia, you have to hold a referendum, and the citizens almost always reject it, except for Rappahannock. They were sold that it was a tax on the tourists, but it's a tax every time I go down and get pizza, it hackles. So I'm paying that mail and lodging tax, that every district in this county, except Jackson, but I haven't mentioned that, voted for, and it, and it went through in this county. But what you're asking for is saying that we want to have the ability, like cities and towns, to just implement new taxes on the people, without them having any idea that it's coming. And I'm opposed to that.
I concur with Mr. Frasier. I've had probably sixteen years of it built into my brain from the Virginia Restaurant, Lodging, and Travel Association. You don't want to just give the authority to tax, because it becomes the easiest thing in the world to tax a particular industry, such as a restaurant. And you don't think about it until your neighbors come pay the bill, and then wonder why it's, right now, it's nine point three percent. And that's not cheap. And you look at Virginia Beach and other counties that have got eleven, twelve, and to just be able to cartonage, make a tax on the citizens by default.
We're, we're already pretty high on the food and lodging taxes, food tax, and burger, you know, restaurant owners complaining about it, and it's not, you know, it's not going to encourage more people to come out here if they feel like they got to pay a little extra more for what they're getting, which includes even the coffee, so.
Yeah, I concur that we just need to hear about this one.
It's a considerable volume, you pay.
So we can take no action, or we can have a vote on this?
I would recommend you take no action.
The next item on the agenda is the Virginia detention post-dispositional program with the county for funding and placement. I know Mr. Curry, he's been working on this, keep filling out the details.
Yes, as Board members may be aware, occasionally, children in this community need a little extra help. That's generally handled through the Social Services Department and Children's Services Act, where that may be placed in residential placement, where they have a little bit of closer guidance and education. Sometimes when they get in a little bit too much trouble, they end up in a juvenile detention center. And we have an agreement with the Loudoun County Juvenile Detention Center, which we include that funding in our budget for that. There are situations when judges try to find ways to help guide a youth so that they won't be incarcerated for long periods of time, and the post-dispositional program is developed for that. They aren't incarcerated within a juvenile detention center, but they have a very guided mentoring and school path within, within that program, the post-dispositional program. Best to my knowledge, we have not had any children work through a post-D process before our local, judges thought this was appropriate for any local youth, but we have no agreement with Loudoun for this, and we have no budget. This situation in that particular case may no longer be germane, however, this remains a valuable tool for some youth when the professionals, the mental health professionals, or the Department of Children and Justice professionals think this is the appropriate path. To enable that to happen in the future, we would have to have an agreement with a facility that offers a post-D program, and Loudoun does. There is a draft agreement in the agenda packet that is near final, and a head corresponds from the superintendent of the Juvenile Detention Center, as recently as today, and Mr. Goff reviewed this draft, saying that he could approve it as to form, and their attorney was going to give it a final once-over as well. So that's part of the puzzle, is having an agreement in place, and it is very expensive. It's two hundred and fifty dollars a day. That compares to the very expensive residential placements that are paid through, through Child, Children's Services Act, which you have a one point three million dollar budget, because those services are also very expensive. And so if a child were to be assigned to a post-D program instead of a, a residential placement, then it's kind of one's a buck and the other, Children's Services pays, we pay forty-two percent of that bill, whereas this, we'd be paying the full amount. So I don't think this happens very often here, it's probably not something you want to build into your annual budget, it's an annual recurring need. But it's one of those things that may come up from time to time, and being in a good financial position, you could choose to know that you would budget for it when it comes up as a need out of contingency or supplemental appropriation from your fund base. So this item is requesting authorization to execute an MOU with, for this service, if a child is appropriately assigned to its use, and provide a maximum budget from contingency for six months, which is the maximum stay for any one child in such a use, whether a child is assigned to it or not. And it's very confusing.
So a hundred and eighty days times two hundred and fifty dollars.
Forty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a bit of budget left in the juvenile detention line right now, which is why approximately forty-two thousand is, would be needed to cover six months. Can they do that a child is never assigned to this in this current fiscal year, or is assigned for two months, or is there for two months and is removed for some reason, because it's not working out?
Just cut what this is.
Correct. She, she placed an order for a particular child contingent on the Board executing an agreement. So if you don't do that, I'm not exactly sure what the Court should do about that. But this particular case is not really what we're talking about tonight, and may have been overcome by events. So in order to approve the MOU and a budget, it very well may be that we don't use it.
There are other, I'm sorry, I just want to say there are, there are other options aside, aside from this program. It may not be quite the same with pinline as such, but if, I mean, I feel like if we didn't go along with this, that they would, you know, find another source to take care of an individual child that kind of need.
Sometimes that means outstate even more money.
It does. Yeah, but I'm thinking that, you know, it's all the issues we have at the courthouse, and, you know, not having proper space to separate, you know, different parties from each other, might not be a good idea to make a difference. That's a drop in the bucket, compared to a sixteen million dollar courthouse.
Post-D is usually a program with last resort, where a child is, generally, you're going to have organic medical conditions that cause them to lash out, and that's probably one of the reasons why this thing is so expensive, because there's so much specialized staff in post-D. But a lot of times, the last resort's the best resort, and it actually results in less recidivism when they reach adulthood. As a program, it's pretty, pretty successful, documented wise, and while all of the two hundred and fifty bucks is expensive, when it comes down to, if you've got a child who then ends up being incarcerated in Department of Corrections later on for extended period of time, you talk about a lot of the statewide, not necessarily cost for them just by us. But, so, so in a sense that, of course, I'm familiar with the cases before the court now, and it's truly a last resort, and it's a lot of times the result of utero exposure, that these types of behaviors are resulted in utero exposure to illicit substances versus illegal substances in inappropriate quantities, that bring children having this kind of violent propensity. So just by way of background, the public should know that.
You have witnessed success in this program?
I have heard of success. Rapide has never had a post-D placement. Said I can, I don't even think when Mr. Luke was seen, we've never had a post-D placement until now.
I would place this in the form of a motion to create a rule, so that we have something that makes it easier.
And that is to authorize execution of the agreement after approval is to form and allocation of contingency budget?
Yes, sir.
That's the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Small problem?
No.
All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is the amended budget public hearing confirmation.
The meeting is going long, and I will try to make this short. If you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Each year, usually around November, December, ask the board to hold the public hearing to amend the budget because you've exceeded your 1% supplemental appropriation or that state law requires you to hold a public hearing. And that happens generally because of so-called carryover appropriations of large projects that weren't finished in the previous year, and we didn't know that in May when we adopted the budget. Included in the packet several documents, supplemental appropriation forms that you typically see, as well as summary information, amended budget and amended budget public hearing to be held at your February meeting, and then a summary table within the Word Docs package that identifies $277,400 in fire service fund from its fund balance to cover the final payment for the hair system, which we didn't appropriate into the FY '20 budget because we thought it would be done in '19. Well, no, it wasn't done in '19. Here we are in '20. A small increase in fire services fund to recognize increased state revenue for state fire fund, a $9,000 carryover because we did not spend in FY '19 money for the calendar year '18 audits that were just completed. We'll pay for those right now. And we will also complete the calendar year '19 audits in current fiscal year, so both of those. Recognizing additional public safety entry point grant funding for the Unit 91 project, sheriff reimbursement from the propane vendor, sheriff reimbursement for training, sheriff reimbursement from our insurer for vehicle tear claim, maintenance reimbursement from our insurer for the electrical source that damaged the generators, and it's the cost of the rental generator outside, this $36,000 covers all the rental fees and the repair costs. And then the juvenile post-dispositional program. You noted you would fund it from contingency in the last item, so it doesn't need to be listed in the budget, but it's shown here. And then schools, one of the main reasons why this has been delayed is that Ms. Nick and I have been working with Ms. Witt and Ms. Grimsley on their supplemental appropriation request. And there were, there was a little confusion between the two of us relative to the audits. We really need to get the audit wrapped up. And now that it is, Ms. Witt told me I should probably have something by the end of today. And so I would like to incorporate that into this package and would ask you to allow me to advertise this public hearing to include their information as long as I receive it before the advertising deadline of January 21. All this will go before a public hearing, will be full public display individually. At which time I'll probably say the exact same thing.
If we just need a motion to advertise this presented in the packet?
Yes. I would note that if you're mind to not fund the post-D program from contingency and rather funded from fund balance, really didn't make much difference. Right now, I'm showing it out of fund balance.
So with that small change?
Yeah.
I can make that motion.
In a second? I'll say. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Madam Chair, members of the board, seeing that we have two attorneys sitting here now, I'm just wondering if we could change the order of the business. We don't have that much pressing, but I don't think that we couldn't do that.
Maybe the home strip.
We could probably move K and L to weekend of the meeting after the business.
There is information that forces our, maybe we can skip that. It's just something we need to talk about.
Yeah, I'm comfortable to catch up with that from the information that's been outlined. And then we can just move that out. I and L, that's put it before the board.
The K three, the legal matters, that possibly just come up in the close session?
And this is really just a item to share with the public that's going on. So my hearing, you're deeming that K is complete, and you're naming the agenda to move down.
Between the essence of the evening, that's the only other one. I would make that motion. One second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, go, go session first. I'm going to break.
Either we need to read into closed meeting or take a short recess, take a photo, or...
Let's go ahead and go. If it's agreeable to everyone, let's go ahead and go to close.
Yeah, because we want to follow the speaker.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There are actually two motions, because one of the matters to discuss in closed meeting references Mr. Frazier's case, which you cannot participate in, so this first motion doesn't include that, because you cannot participate.
Actually, I received a memo from my attorneys that represent me as member of the board member, and they suggested that I remain in the discussion here, but it would certainly not be something that I should vote on. Under, I think it's 2.23112E.
So are you wanting to move into all of it at one time?
I think so.
Okay.
Does that not represent, Mr. Goff, does that not represent the FOIA issue?
Well, it certainly may constrain what counsel could say to the rest of the members.
It doesn't, you know, it doesn't sound like a very good idea.
It's a very conflicted situation because as member of the board, you're saying that I can't be here. And if, it actually involves me and the golf around me. So I was told by, again, my legal counsel as an individual member of the board, that I should stay.
That might have been something you may have wanted to give an opinion for before today.
I'm sorry?
That might have been something you might want to give an opinion on before today from the convos attorney, i.e. me.
I can't give it to you because you're going to.
How am I conflicted?
This is, this is a three-year-old problem, sir. You are conflicted as counsel for the board, and you're giving them advice, and that is certain to me as a board member. You can't give me advice as a convos attorney.
I can certainly write a publicly published opinion.
You worked with me to me because you're conflicted, sir.
I am not conflicted, Mr. Frazier.
You are conflicted, and if you can't see that, I, I, I should just stop this discussion because it's, it's, it's ridiculous. I'm sorry, sir.
I represent the board, which is not the individual members. And as convos attorney, I am tasked by statute to give an opinion on FOIA and whether or not a particular pattern of facts were violated.
Under normal circumstances, but you hold both positions, by holding both positions, you are conflicted and cannot do that.
I disagree with Frazier because I represent the board, which speaks through its resolutions, which is a majority of the board, not an individual client, I mean, not an individual member of the board.
That's not statutory as a county attorney. Statutory, the statutory duty, and Mr. Mitchell, who sits here now, has told this board once before that the statutory, the county attorney, I'm sorry, county attorney has a statutory obligation to defend the board and a member of the board and to be able to give them legal advice. And you, sir, you, sir, what you did was to violate that trust position because you did not do that. You cannot do that, but yet you did that.
I think the simplest thing is possibly just skip this all together and just go into closed session for the one thing, but not the other. How does that sound to me?
Well, I agree. I mean, I haven't looked at this particular FOIA issue, so I'm not sitting here, I'm just saying, I'm not going to be able to tell you anything regarding representing the board to the board's interest with the presence of the person who's suing the board, sitting here listening to what I've got to say.
That's a mark. So if Mr. Frazier insists on staying, I recommend that we do not go into closed session at all.
My representation as an individual member of the board told me that I should stay, just in case that things were said that were not exactly correct, I can at least correct it.
Is there, is there a time-sensitive nature to go into closed meeting regarding Frazier versus Board Supervisors case number 19-148?
Well, it depends on what happens in closed session. We may not have, but we have hearings scheduled for the 16th of this month.
Yeah, well, I'm comfortable enough not to know anything about it. Because it's, you say it's going to go into a hearing in court?
There's hearings scheduled for the 16th, yes.
Well, let it happen. I, rather than going with Mr. Goff's stance, rather than risk the FOIA violation, I think it's safer just not to.
If you don't do it, you have to amend the agenda.
Yeah. You've, you've come to the point in the meeting, and if you don't enter, you don't enter.
Right. We'll go into closed session for that.
You can go in closed session for the other issues, and if you don't want to go in closed session for one of the issues, you can simply not read that motion.
Not that motion, exactly. That would be better. It would be a loss of, in my opinion.
Not going to be a lawsuit. See, this is the biggest problem is members of this board that cause a lot of problems don't seem to even understand what they're doing, and that's what caused all the problems. There's no lawsuit if I sit here and discuss a legal issue that I'm involved in under 31 on 2.23112E, and I mention that. If you don't understand it, certainly that's not my problem, but there's no lawsuit because of that. If there's any, if there's any legal ramifications, it would be on me as an individual board member for staying here, not you.
I think the easiest way to do this might be to read the motions separately as they are in the packet, and then can we treat them all as one closed session and vote on them separate? We can vote on them separately, they're different items.
You can definitely vote on them separately. You need to certify coming out on that particular item, so I don't, you may not have a majority that want to go in for all or some.
So I think that the easiest way to do is probably to read them the way that they are presented and have two separate votes, and then we'll know from that what we're meeting in closed session on, and what we need to certify at the end of closed session on.
The way it's envisioned now is that you enter one closed meeting, exit, certify, and then enter the second closed meeting. And we're all to the county attorney, there's a better way to do it. You may want to change your order if there's some question as to whether the motion to enter a closed meeting and Frazier versus Board Supervisors will have a majority to enter closed meeting. If it fails, then we'll decide and move on to the next one.
Okay, that sounds like a reasonable way forward. So we need a motion to enter into closed meeting on the matter of the Frazier book case.
Let's amend the order first, just to be squeaky. So just move the M three regarding the Frazier case to...
M one.
One, N, N one to M three.
I would make a motion to that effect. One second?
Could you, sorry, could you just repeat what you're proposing to do? Swap the orders of the two closed meeting items as part of the agenda, associate the Frazier one comes first, then you exit closed meeting, certify, and then you go into the other one with all the cases.
We're not going to the closed.
Well, you're going to go into closed session with Frazier first.
You're going to hand the other, you're going to consider, and they may think. Right.
In which case, everybody will be sitting here and see that.
You're separating.
May I ask, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Frasier.
I just had a question for Mr. Goff. If Mr. Frazier had shared, or now that you're aware of the advice he received from his attorney, is it something that you could consider on behalf of the board, this county attorney, and give us your opinion to institute spolity within the context of FOIA?
Well, it's not like, it's not like you can spray it on the right.
No, I understand, I'm just...
Not today.
No, yeah, that's, that's my question is, would it be something that you could, could have done or could do now with sufficient time?
I certainly wouldn't have been glad to give it a stab, and if I, in my analysis, figured that there was some sort of problem with me doing that, then I certainly would bring that up.
Right.
But if just sitting here right now, no.
No, yeah, I totally understand that. I'm just asking, in a situation like this, representing our board, would it, given, given the time available, would the next step be to give us an opinion as to...
Certainly.
...spolity of outside counsel's opinion?
Absolutely.
In the context of FOIA.
Accretive.
Yeah, great. No, I understand that.
Also, it would be a little bit...
We're starting to go off on a different path. The legal advice I got was for me, and it does not affect you.
It would be a little bit like having, inviting Mary Bryant to come in to sit in closed session when we were discussing her case.
No, she's not a member of the board. So how is that, how is that the quote?
Well, she's still in the board, I guess.
But she's not a member of the board. The legal advice I got from my attorney as an individual member of this board, that is the only way that I can get legal advice. Okay? Let me get that point out here. That is the only way I can get legal advice is to have a separate attorney. So my attorneys gave me legal advice concerning the FOIA ramifications as they would affect me if I remained in the meeting. It has no effect on you, and I don't know why you were down that path.
I went down that path.
No, but he did first. It doesn't affect you.
I think it was me.
I understand.
I mean, I think the first, the first step to unravel this knot is, is there a second to discuss the Frazier case first for the closed session? There's no second?
There's a, I'll second it. And so this is something whether we want to go in closed session or not, right?
Yes, the order for the...
Yeah, that's fine.
So...
One second.
So we have a motion, a second? So we have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the agenda is now amended, where we will discuss...
We will consider...
We'll consider going to closed session to discuss the Frazier matter first, and the other second.
So I have a printed motion to conduct a closed meeting for consultation of legal counsel pertaining actual litigation or such consultation opening would adversely affect litigating posture of the public body, 2.2371187. Consultation of legal counsel employed retained by public body regarding specifically the matters of the firing. Provision of legal advice by such counsel, 2.237188. For the subject matter of Frazier versus Board Supervisors case number 19148. If the board would like to enter closed meeting for that purpose, you can move what I just said.
Read the motion, does that affect?
Point of order, what could you be discussing?
Consultation of legal counsel pertaining actual litigation, etc., consultation, dot, 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 I guess, would be the bound, the balance of what could be discussed, is what is allowed pursuant to...
The board needs to know what they're involved in. This board is being dragged through something that the previous board created. And they should have an idea of what's going on, whether it's discussed or moved to a closed session.
I mean, I think the, I think the motion is clear, in what the boundaries are for the discussion, how the discussion unfolds is a matter for closed meeting. But we need a motion on second before we can have that discussion.
Hi, Madam Chair. I would only say, I appreciate that you've been put in a tough spot here, and you have your own attorney, and have someone from outside, outside the county representing you. That said, as a new members board, I'm, I'm not comfortable putting ourselves in a potential conflict of interest situation until I understand better what the legal opinion you received was, and how, how the attorney representing the board...
I shared that with you.
Right. I understand that. But, I mean, we're, we're here in Board Supervisors meeting with our county attorney present, so I just wanted to proceed cautiously. It's not...
Can I ask a question? A couple of questions. It appears, it appears that the board members are afraid that there is some sort of conflict of interest.
Well, I think that that's the nature of closed session, is that you do discuss legal strategies. And I can see where they're challenged to constrain the conversation. But the fact of the matter is, is you and I very well know, Mr. Frazier, sometimes you don't have to go very far into a discussion to see how it will unfold.
But if there's anyone that would be involved in a conflict of interest, it would be me and not the members of the board.
I understand that.
What the board needs to know is what the lawsuit is about somehow, whether we do it in open session or not. They don't know. And all they have is my side of it, and the side that Mr. Goff may tell them privately, and they may not see. Maybe I have something that I missed or left out, and I intentionally, maybe he does, and we need to have that discussion.
Maybe I can help a little bit in that the two sections of FOIA that allow you to go into closed meeting do so with allowance to consult with legal counsel pertaining to these matters. And if it's to consult with you, that's not a closed meeting item. If it's to consult with legal counsel...
But I'm a member of the board.
But you're not legal counsel, so that's not subject to closed meeting from your FOIA officer. You would have to meet one and two to talk about things in closed meeting. And if it's just for you to give an update, I guess you can give an update one by one outside of a meeting, or anything you want to talk about in public. But to get advice from the legal counsel, they can, the board as a body can do that in closed meeting.
And that's what I'm afraid of.
I do not feel comfortable with y'all going into a closed meeting to discuss that particular instance, when I'm not here to know a little bit about what's being said.
But there's been no motion or second going on in closed session.
And that's where I think we have to be in pass.
No, I, I don't want to know what y'all are talking about as far as what his legal strategy is, because I already know what his legal strategy is. But he's going to discuss that with you, and that's fine. I don't have to be here for that. But you need to know what the lawsuit's about. And that's what I don't think everybody seems to understand, that we're not on the same page understanding that.
But I don't think you can explain that in closed meeting.
All right, well, let's, let's talk about it in open meeting.
That's fine.
What it boils down to is, the county attorney, through his work with Mr. Brown, they served numerous subpoenas and the threat of depositions, where I would be under penalty of perjury, that was the term that he used in his testimony in open meeting. And I was going to be deposed as a member of the governing body with no legal representation, because the county attorney, for some unknown reason, decided to, to take the process by involving himself in an adversarial role against a member of the board. And that's what happened. I had to have legal counsel as a member of the board, as the code specifies that each member is required to handle. I was left with none. And because he's both county attorney and county attorney, and chose the path to be adversarial to an individual member, I had no one that I could talk to in this community for legal advice as a member of the board supervisors in accordance with my role in that capacity. And that's what it all boils down to. The board paid one invoice, decided not to pay anymore, and at the same time that they made that decision, they had the county attorney and his assistant in this process, Mr. Brown, issue me summonses as a member of the board. And this is, this is unheard of in this area. No, no one has ever done it before in this form, and I don't know of any adjoining county or locality where this has been done to an individual member of the governing body. And just because Mr. Goff was working for a majority of the board supervisors, either, neither him and his capacity as county attorney, or those individual members have the right to, to violate a provision of the Code of Virginia as it relates to members of the governing body, and their right to have legal representation. They don't have that authority. And that's what this whole lawsuit is about, to pay the invoices that they generate. And their attack, their open attack on me as a member of the board. And the craziest part of all, and this FOIA lawsuit nonsense, there's nothing that I can help them with. It was all malicious, or it was done through ignorance. I don't know which. That is on them. I don't know. But it's one thing or the other. I cannot help them. In 39 months, they have not been able to prove in a court of law that this board supervisors had legal meetings, the ones that were in question. 39 months. And there's certainly no way that I can help them with it. So I say that it was malicious, because that's an awful lot of ignorance.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Woodson.
Mr. Frazier, I appreciate all that background. And you and I have discussed the background and your feelings about this, and you know that I...
One famous sort of fact.
You're right. And I respect very much the position you found yourself in is difficult. I would just ask, with respect to this newly constituted board, which is meeting for the first time, that maybe afforded the opportunity, not having been a party to any of those, speaking specifically of Ms. Donna Amy, to meet with the county attorney and, and discuss this lawsuit as needed, if, if we determine a closed session is needed, to do that without you present, until we can sort out this separate question of whether your being present, present would be allowable under FOIA.
It's allowable in FOIA.
I'm, I was asking at this...
No, no, I don't have a problem. I just, as new board members, you and the public need to know exactly what this is all about.
Much appreciated.
And I thought that that's what was going to be the closed session portion of it. I can say one last thing. There's, there was nothing, based on my part, there was nothing malicious, because I was completely unaware of the fact that you're being subpoenaed. No, no, you can say that, you have said that. Let me, let me, I'm sorry to interject, but, but you were copied on the notice, there was a notice from Mr. Brown that he had, no, no, that he had noticed by y'all back in February of the second year. And then Roger, I talked to Mr. Welch over here on December 3rd, when I took the, the information from the first attendant, Mr. Brown's office, and I talked to Mr. Welch about it, and he knew about it, and he said, he said what he said to me about that. Maybe he did, but I was not aware until after. But it doesn't matter. After December 3rd, he knew about it, and he did it again. I just want you to know that.
I think we're getting far afield on this, and I, I do think we need to go ahead and read in the information for the other possible closed session.
Would you like me to read it as...
No, thank you, Mr. Carter.
A motion to conduct a closed meeting in accordance with 2.1, section 2.23711A, quote pertaining for the purpose of consultation of legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation or such consultation opening would adversely affect litigation, litigating posture of the public body, section 2.2371187. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body occurring specifically with matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, section 2.2371188. And the discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including air use of their court offers, and discussion of the terms and scope of such contract for discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body, section 2.23711829. Subject matter of the closed meeting will be, one, Bragg versus Board Supervisors, case 16-180. Two, Bragg versus Board Supervisors, case number 17-204, commonly known as Bragg 2. Three, the, in regarding the number 21, 2019 decision of the board assailing appeals of Rappahannock County, case number 19-241, but in a disarming manner of two. And four, refuse in the second contract terms and expenses. If I could have a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
And you'll call move.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donna, aye. Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Good on you, so.